Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Work Session for the Proposed Operational Budget of Fiscal Year 2324. It is Tuesday, August 8th. It is 6:00 PM and I'm calling this meeting to order. Our first item on the agenda is our invocation and our pledge allegiance will be led by our city manager, Felicia Donnelly. Please rise.
Good evening. Please bow. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us to engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that might affect the residents of the city of Oldsmar. Continue to remind us what we have to do here today, all that we accomplish is for the betterment of the city and for service in our community. In this we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Felicia, for that. We're going to continue with our Oldsmar Open Forum. Is there anybody that would like to come up and speak to the council? Let's start with this side of the room. Anybody for open forum? Come on up.
I just found out how to shorten my speech. Hi, Suda Yantis Cologne 402 Arlington Avenue East, Oldsmar, Florida. I'm the Director of the City of Oldsmar's Opal Theater Program and Miss Suda's Dancers. So I'd just like to remind everybody that Miss Suda's dancers recital for our summer showcase, which is called Jazz Hot Summer, is coming up on August 19th down at RE Olds Park. And also, our 24 students in Opal Theater are excitedly practicing on Peter Pan Jr., which will be coming up on October 14th down at RE Olds Park. And that helps shorten my three minutes, my four minutes down to three. So thank you very much, and we hope the community and you all will come out and join us for those shows. Thank you.
Thank you, Suda. Anybody else on this side of the room? Come on up.
Amber Stevens, 318 Lafayette Boulevard, and...
Thank you for putting the speed bumps here. The cars are really slowing down. And I have some cards for you.
We have noticed a great significance because they are slowing down a lot. They're so thankful. And even if it's time to go running in the morning, there's a thank you to them. So Holly has a card that was passed on. So they're all up there. It's Katie.
Holly. Thank you, sweetie. Oh, man.
Thank you so much, Holly. Thank you very much.
Little car right there.
You want to tell them anything about the car? The car?
It's a car that's going fast but then slows down on the speed bumps.
What else?
Oh, you got a blue one.
She insisted that it's laminated so that you never lose it.
Did I get the only purple car?
Um, no, you can blame that too.
No, the girls got purple cars and the boys got blue cars.
Okay, makes sense. Makes sense. Thank you, Holly. They're beautiful.
And also, if I may butt back in, Ms. Holly is, of course, in our cast, playing our Brave Girl and...
What else are you playing?
And Tinker Bell. Sorry, I had to throw that in.
Tinker Bell. Thank you, Holly. Thank you, Amber.
Anybody else would like to speak to the council before we close open forum? Anybody on this side? Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. Gerald Jacobs with the Upper Tampa Bay Education Foundation.
Address.
Again?
Your address.
I'm addressing you.
I know.
The street address for downstairs.
Ah, 7716 Bretton Wood Drive. And I got to tell you, for this year, for the first time, we've got this application that we filled out for our request. I got to tell you, I think that's really great because it helps get everything codified on paper and makes it real clear. We're doing the same thing that we have been doing for the last 16 years. We give money to the local elementary and several of the middle schools, and they can do with it as they please. And especially this year, with the, with inflation being what it is, they use this, the funds that we give to them for things that are...
This is not the right time to speak about your funding. We're going to do that later on in the presentation.
You'll have a chance.
You'll have a chance. You'll have, you get a three minutes.
Three minutes. I need one.
Yeah.
I jumped the gun.
You jumped the gun.
But I like the enthusiasm.
I'll try to continue. I'll contain it for a few more minutes.
All right, you got it. Thank you. Anybody else like to speak to the council? All right, we're going to close the Oldsmar Open Forum. We're going to get our budget started, and Felicia Donnelly, our city manager, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council and our other guests. Thank you for joining us today for this very significant... We are thrilled to present to you the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2324. Throughout this presentation, we'll focus on the budget's highlights and provide a detailed explanation of the city's financial plans. I must commend the department heads and the diligent efforts of our Administrative Services team, who worked tirelessly to bring this comprehensive proposal to fruition. I'd like to take a moment to introduce, to introduce our team. So Jennifer Campbell, so if you guys could say, give a wave. John Dauphinay, Amy Ratliff, Garrett Zilif, Chief Schwabe, Daniel Simpson, Chip Potts, Michelle Kutch, Tatiana Childress, City Clerk Kristen Garcia, Kathy Horvath. And I want to do a shout out also to, and express my gratitude, to Barbara Schulte, who put together the actual physical document, and to Jordan Lance, who worked tirelessly and for a long time on actual the presentation. So, so, thank you. And we're so proud to present this proposed annual budget. And if you have any questions along the way, please don't hesitate to ask as we go. So, this year, every year, we pick a theme. So, this year, we developed a theme for the new fiscal year budget, and then with a vibrant new city logo being recently adopted by you all, it only made sense to carry out the theme of fun and creativity by showcasing over 400 pieces of art created by children at Oldsmar Elementary and Forest Lakes Elementary Schools. So we hope you enjoy the, the actual graphic presentation of the document. Are you guys ready to get started?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's, let's start talking about the budget process. The budget process includes four broad phases: preparation, city council review, adoption, implementation, and evaluation. It's really a year-long process. The departments begin working on their budgets around January 1st each year, and they submit their capital and their operating budget requests for evaluation. We have a series of budget meetings that are held in the spring. During this time, staff is busy preparing various estimates and projections based on multiple steps of assumptions. Oversimplified, a balanced budget is presented to the council in mid-July. The council adopts the proposed mill rate, kicking off the trim process. This brings us today, the council budget work session. Any changes resulting from this meeting will be incorporated into the budget submitted for the first budget hearing to be held on September 5th. Prior to the second budget hearing, the budget ad is published in the newspaper. Yes, the newspaper. Three to five days prior to the second budget hearing to be held on September the 20th. If all goes as planned, the fiscal year 24 budget will be adopted as of 10/1/2023. As the budget is year-round this October, we begin for FY '25. This year, the process will begin with a community visioning session to help council update this current vision and mission and set upcoming priorities for the next couple of years. This is tentatively scheduled for October 4th. This will be followed by a council work session. We've procured the assistance of a consultant Strategic Government Resources for this effort. So you'll find some significant budget presentation changes. So, the first one is that we've included the current strategic plan. We've used the 2023 Citizen Satisfaction Survey as a performance measure. You'll notice that across the board through all departments. We connected department and fund goals and the objectives to the city council's seven strategy goals. We've changed two department names: Leisure Services to Parks and Recreation to give it consistency among industry standards, and Communication, Marketing, and the Arts for Public Communications. Also, you'll notice the budget got a lot, a lot bigger, and, and that's because we've included the entire CIP presentation, which outlines in detail each project that the city is funding. So every budget has a strategy, every process does. So, so what is our overarching strategy? A balanced budget, that's important. It supports the strategic plan, city council goals, and priorities. The general fund is unrestricted fund balances maintained at the required 15% per resolution. Enterprise funds shall be self-supporting. And then the final CIP, Capital Improvement Program, is incorporated in the annual budget So I like to say that, that this year, we have unique budget challenges, but my 30 years of experience, every year has unique budget challenges. So they just differ from year to year. But this year was quite difficult. Inflationary concerns all over the place, competitive workforce to maintain one, that's important, and then so an uncertain economy that really just equated to a fiscally conservative approach to the budget to really ensure the city's financial solvency into the next few years and the future. So inflation. How did it hit the city? Well, the same way that it hit people at home, just exponentially, right? We purchased more goods and services. So vehicles, fuel, general supplies, our property insurance is estimated to increase by 80%. Design and construction services, labor, contractual services, all across the board, there wasn't anything that we didn't experience inflation. Maintaining a competitive workforce, extremely important in today's environment. So the Compensation, Classification, and Benefit Study was completed in 2023. You all voted for the new pay plan. Just recently, we put in a lot of those in effect for July 1st, but it doesn't stop there. This year, budget includes a 4% cost of living adjustment and up to 2% merit increases across the staff. That doesn't include collective bargaining units such as, well, fire. The city increased its contribution toward dependent medical insurance to be competitive with our peers, and also, to be competitive, a new employer-paid long-term disability insurance was added to the collective benefits. So just your strategic goals. There are seven strategic goals. They were adopted in 2013, and they're set to expire. So that is why Strategic Government Resources is coming in to facilitate that, to update these. So the first one's economic development, infrastructure, public relations, quality of place, sustainability, transportation, and workforce development. So on May 17th, 2022, you all adopted city council priorities for last year and this year, right? Priorities often take multiple years. So the first priority is to build the downtown corridor, enhance roadway safety, including safe routes to schools, execute Oldsmar Sports Complex improvements, expand community engagement, maintain existing infrastructure, renovate and upgrade Harbor Palms infrastructure, and update the comprehensive plan. We have made progress in each of these, but there's still work to do. Also, every good budget has a basis of a, of a, of good policies that have been adopted. So certain policies have been established to help ensure that we're a good steward of public assets. And these include, but they're not limited to, this is just a capture of the major ones: maintenance of infrastructure and equipment, also a council priority, financial controls. Will not approve any purchase that is not budgeted or otherwise approved by council. So the budget is the document that provides the, the plan for the expenses for next year. Budgetary position control. That really is that I can't create new or higher additional positions that haven't been approved by council, right? That's a, a separation of duties between a council and a city manager. Periodic review of rate schedules. As you all know, we've been updating our rate schedules. So we recently updated the planning fees, we recently updated water sewer rates. We're going to continue updating our rates as appropriate and to, to maintain the cost of the system. So we're going to talk later on about a stormwater rate increase, and we're looking at our impact fees, which haven't been increased in a long time. Other administrative policies include accounting policies, investment policies, debt management policies. So the city's done a very diligent job in making sure that our financial policies are in place so that we can provide good stewards of the tax money and other funding. So before I turn it over, I also wanted to thank Cindy Nino, the Director of Administrative Services. She can't be with us tonight. And so, so I, I want to call Garrett Zilif, who is going to, to, to talk for the next few slides. So, so Cindy, if you're watching on TV, we thank you very much for all of your work.
All right. Thank you, Felicia. I appreciate that introduction. And as city manager Donnelly mentioned, I'm Garrett Zilif, your finance administrator, and it is a pleasure to be here this evening with all of you. Wow, nice turnout. So before I get started, and I will get rolling here in a minute, just a quick note that our accounting administrator, Amy Ratliff, and I are going to be attempting to fill the shoes of Cindy Nino, your Director of Administrative Services, who isn't able to be here tonight, as Felicia mentioned. And as you know, that's a high bar. So also because we know she's watching the livestream right now.
Yep.
And she can't kick me under the table. I'm just going to say a quick thank you to Cindy for all her lessons and guidance she's given us over the years. We, we're looking forward to getting your feedback on this Monday morning. All right, so let's get into the fun stuff, the numbers. The fiscal year 24 budget is proposed at $50,218,045. You're going to hear that number a lot tonight, so I'll probably just say $50 million and save us a couple hours. That is a 17.4% decrease from the fiscal '23 revised budget. Capital outlay is budgeted at $16,302,800, which is a 32.5%, 32.5% of the total budget for fiscal '24. That is a decrease of $13,733,455 from last year's revised budget. I'm not going to do this for every number. I promise I won't read them all out loud. Once again, you'll see the mill rate has not changed. That is the 16th year in a row. It will be 4.05 mills. And in fact, the mill rate has not changed in, has not increased in 34 years. And if we do a little rounding, because I am the finance guy, that's basically as long as I've been alive. So, good job, everyone. The city's taxable property values are anticipated to increase 8.82%, which is less than expected and kind of amongst the lowest in the county for the property appraiser. It is important to note that this number includes a reduction in the tangible personal property, which is partially the result of a reduction in utilization of office space, as we've seen everybody go to remote work, and thus the reduction, a reduction in the value of business equipment. So, real property values increased 10.84%, and tangible personal property, or TPP, decreased 2.55%. So that gets you to your 8.82%. And to me, anyway, this really illustrates the impact and the important value of the city's diverse business community, because that, obviously, those businesses have an impact on our taxable value here. And finally, as a big part of our fiscally conservative approach to the city's budget this year, we have budgeted no new debt, underlined, because I really like that bullet point. We've been, especially in this rising interest rate environment, avoiding taking on new debt whenever possible. And this year, you'll see proceeds from the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, grant funding, and several state appropriations that are going to help support the construction of our major capital projects in lieu of debt. Okay. As you would expect from someone in the Finance Division, we're going to be diving into lots of details later in the presentation, but for the next few slides, I kind of want to go over a summary of the citywise, citywide proposed budget for fiscal '2324. Looking at the pie chart on your left, expenditures by fund, you see that as a percentage of citywide budget, general fund makes up 36%, water sewer fund makes up 35%, solid waste fund 6%, stormwater 4%, capital improvement 13%, CRA 5%, and other funds 1%. Interesting to me about this chart is if you look, the water sewer fund, stormwater fund, and solid waste fund combined, which collectively represent the city's enterprise or business-type funds, represent 45% of the total city's budget. And if you move over to the pie chart on the right, you can see that 30% of the budget is allocated to personal services or to the cost of employees. 26% is allocated to operating costs, 32% to capital outlay, which are items that cost more than $2,000 and have a useful life of longer than one year. You all saw the vast majority of these as part of the proposed capital improvement program work session, and which, as Felicia mentioned, have been incorporated into this budget document tonight. And 2% is budgeted for debt service for the two current debt issues the city has, and 10% is allocated to reserves and transfers. Ooh, that was a good transition there. All right, so as Felicia mentioned, the following items related to personal services have been incorporated into the fiscal '24 budget, including the new pay plan, which was effective July 1st, with a starting pay of $15 an hour and was a result of the Compensation and Classification Study, a 4% cost of living adjustment, and up to a 2% merit increase for existing employees. We have increased city contributions to dependent healthcare coverage, which reduced employee costs 10%, and a new employer-paid benefit of long-term disability for all permanent full-time employees. So overall, that puts personal services costs up about 8% over the prior fiscal year. And these powerful changes will invest in the city's most important asset, its employees, and assist the city with recruitment and retention in this area's highly competitive labor market. All right, talking about personnel, balancing the needs of the departments with the availability of funds, the city manager is recommending a number of position adjustments in the fiscal '24 budget. So these include the downgrade of the vacant assistant city manager position to an assistant to the city manager position, the creation of a new public works administrator position in the public works department with 50% of the cost of that position allocated to the general fund and 50% allocated to the stormwater utility fund, the elimination of the fleet supervisor position in general fund, the downgrade of two maintenance operator positions in the Parks and Recreation Department to facilities attendance. One of those is in the Parks Division and one is in the OSC, or Oldsmar Sports Complex Division. We also have the elimination of one part-time receptionist position in the Administrative Services Department, and the effective transfer of that position to a part-time customer service clerk in the water sewer fund, the utility billing division specifically. We'll also be splitting the director of planning and redevelopment salary and benefits to be 50% in the general fund, not by cutting poor Tatiana in half, but by allocating the other 50% of her personal services to the CRA as an allowable expense of CRA funds. Moving over to the water sewer operating fund, we see the flip side of that reduction of the part-time receptionist position in general fund here to be an increase of a part-time customer service clerk to better align with workload, assist with increasing operational needs, and provide a greater level of services to our utility customers. Also, in the water sewer fund, the public works department has requested the upgrade of one existing A, B, or C operator position at both the reverse osmosis water treatment plant and the water reclamation facility. This will result, result in no new full-time equivalent positions, but will be an increase to two currently authorized positions. And finally, in the stormwater fund, we see the allocation of that half of the new public works administrator position, with the other half being in general fund street division. And as we go through the budget presentations on each division, the department heads will give you a little bit more detail on those positions. All right, so here's the citywide personnel summary. And we can see, if you look at the chart, there is no increase in authorized positions for fiscal '24. Again, part of that conservative approach to budgeting for this year due to the uncertainty in the macroeconomic environment. General fund's FTE count is being reduced by 1.5 employees for fiscal '24. The CRA is increased by .5. The water sewer operating fund has an increase of .5, and stormwater shows an increase of .5 for that new public works administrator position. So overall, no new full-time equivalent positions authorized for fiscal '24. Moving on from personnel to capital, here we can see the top 10 biggest projects, and there are some big hitters on this list, included in the fiscal '24 budget, as approved by council at the May 23rd Capital Improvement Program Work Session. There's, like I said, there's some big-ticket items here, including the WRF control building, multiple pieces of the St. Petersburg Drive project, including the roundabout and the WRF filter capacity expansion. It is important to note that the Douglas Road Widening Project was budgeted in fiscal year '23, so the current fiscal year, and is not included in the proposed doc, budget document that you all reviewed and that we're looking at tonight. We have learned that due to unanticipated delays, we're going to need to rebudget that project in fiscal '24. So you'll see that adjustment submitted as part of the changes between the proposed budget we're looking at tonight and the final budget you all will be voting on in September. And you'll get more details on these amazing projects and other capital requests as we go along. Okay, so debt. As discussed, we're not budgeting any new debt in fiscal '24, and the city has two current debt, debt issues, which you can see here. The first is for the Harbor Palms Infrastructure Improvements Project, and it contains both governmental for the streets and sidewalks and enterprise for stormwater portion of the project debt. It has a favorable interest rate of 1.93%, and it matures in 2033. The second piece of debt the city has is for a refinancing of the SRF debt related to the construction of the RO plant, and it has a rate of 1.53% and matures in 2032. In addition to these two debt issues, you'll see a page in the budget document dedicated to the Veterans Memorial Park debt. Since the last installment on that debt was paid off in October of 2022, no money is presented in fiscal '24, and this page is presented just for historical reporting purposes. Looking at the right column here, we can see total budgeted debt service for fiscal '24 is just over $1 million. And as anyone who's shopping for a house or a car knows, this increase in interest rates has had a dramatic impact on the cost of financing. So especially in the current macroeconomic environment, with these increased rates, the city's benefiting from our predilection towards saving for future capital projects rather than debt funding whenever possible, as those savings for our future capital projects are now earning interest in the city's investment portfolio rather than costing more in debt All right, so before we take a deeper dive into the numbers, I'd like to explain the different types of funds presented in the budget and just quickly review their purpose. Broadly, we have two types of funds. There are the governmental funds and the proprietary funds. Proprietary funds are also called enterprise or business-type activities. And the general fund is a governmental fund that accounts for financial resources and expenditures not accounted for in any other fund, meaning not in a special revenue fund, not in the capital projects fund, and not in the enterprise funds. The general fund is generally supported by tax revenues, intergovernmental revenues, and user fees such as those for parks and recreation classes. This fund provides for what can be considered traditional government services, such as executive management, human resources, public safety, et cetera. And the budget for general fund for fiscal '24 is $18,071,055, which is an increase of $436,000 or 2.5% from fiscal '23. Next, we have the special revenue funds, which are also considered governmental funds. They have dedicated revenue sources with restricted uses. So as an example, the public safety impact fund revenues can only be used to fund fire capital expenditures. Three of these funds exist primarily to collect these impact fees and to record the approved disbursement of resources for those capital expansion projects. The fourth that you see there is the CRA fund, the Community Redevelopment Agency Fund, also is a governmental special revenue fund, and it exists to record the revenues and expenditures related to the community redevelopment area. And then we have some governmental debt service funds or sinking funds. These funds are created to accumulate the resources needed to service governmental debt. These requirements are also often in the issuing documents of the debt and spelled out in our debt covenants. Currently, we have one active debt service fund for the governmental portion of the Harbor Palms Infrastructure Improvement Project, and one inactive debt service fund for the Veterans Memorial Park Project, which, as we talked about, was paid off in October. Then we have the capital projects funds. These are also, this fund is also a governmental fund, and it is used to accumulate and account for resources needed for the city's major governmental capital projects. Large capital projects are budgeted in this fund to help limit the fluctuations of the budget in the general fund and remove the distortion of year-over-year comparisons that would exist if these large capital projects were budgeted in the general fund. It would make it really hard to tell what the budget in general fund looked like if it was moving up and down with the pace of these large projects. it was moving up and down with the pace of these large projects every year. The projects in this fund have specific and frequently complex funding mechanisms involving multiple grants, penny for Pinellas, and sometimes debt. Typically, this fund does not include water, sewer, or stormwater projects, and if projects have both a governmental and an enterprise element to them, such as you'll see with the Harbor Palms Infrastructure Improvement Project, then we break those projects out, and some of the funds are budgeted in the capital improvement fund and some are budgeted in the respective enterprise fund. Oh, what a great segue to enterprise funds. Finally, we have the city's proprietary business-type and enterprise funds. These funds are self-supporting and operate in the same manner as a business and are supported primarily by user fees. The city has four of them and are all funded by revenues received from your utility bill, namely the water sewer operating fund, the water sewer impact fund, the stormwater utility fund, and the solid waste fund. I like to note here that these funds are not supported by tax revenues. Okay, now that we've gone over the types of funds, let's dive in. If you're following along in your budget book, you're on page forty-eight. All right, so the next few slides will provide a citywide overview of all funds for the fiscal twenty-four budget. As we discussed earlier, we're presenting a balanced budget of fifty million dollars for fiscal twenty-four, with the enterprise funds representing forty-five percent of the budget and the governmental funds representing the remaining fifty-five percent. Looking at it through another lens, kind of more numerically, we can see the comparative numbers from prior years by fund. Again, you see fiscal twenty-four is down seventeen point four percent from, or about ten point six million dollars, from the revised fiscal twenty-three budget. Keep in mind, this will change as a result of rebudgeting the Douglas Road project like we talked about. And looking at citywide expenditures by category, we can see, again, personnel services at thirty percent, operating at twenty-six percent, capital at thirty-two percent, debt service at two percent, transfers at one percent, and reserves at nine percent of the citywide budget for the year. So, make sure I'm on the right slide here. Yep. Looking at this information historically, we can see personnel services are up eight point one percent due to the six percent pay increases, the results of the classification and compensation study, and the increase to dependent medical insurance. Citywide operating expenditures are also up about four point six percent, and that represents a concerted effort by staff to hold down costs as much as possible in light of these inflationary pressures. Capital costs are down forty-five point six percent due to the timing of these large capital projects, and this will change with the rebudgeting of Douglas Road. Debt service is down about fourteen point five percent as a result of the retirement of the Veterans Memorial Park debt. Transfers, which represent both an in and an out in the budget, are down fourteen point five percent due to the suspension of the tenth-of-a-mill transfer from general fund to the public safety impact fund. And so the only transfer budgeted this year is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the general fund to the Harbor Palms Debt Service Fund or Fund Two-O-Six. Reserves are up sixty-five percent citywide, and much of that deviation is cyclical and based on our saving for future capital projects. In particular, we're going to be saving penny for Pinellas proceeds in accordance with the city's intent to avoid debt whenever possible. And again, you'll see the overall citywide budget is down, we guessed it, seventeen point four percent. Okay, so let's look at the other side of the equation, the revenue side. This pie chart shows our revenues categorically, and this is on page fifty of the budget book, so we're making some good progress here. Gone two pages. You can see intergovernmental revenues, twenty-four percent, charges for services, thirty-four percent, fines and forfeitures, one. Miscellaneous revenue represents five percent of citywide revenue, transfers one percent, taxes thirty-one percent, and permits and fees four percent. And looking at that same information with kind of a historical lens, we can see citywide taxes are up six point seven percent. So Ad Valorem was up eight point eight-two, as we talked about, but some of the other taxes are anticipated to be flat, and so communication service taxes in particular are budgeted at a zero percent increase, so that'll eat into your eight point eight-two percent a little bit. Permits and fees are expected or projected to be increased about twelve percent, primarily due to TECO franchise fees. As you all have seen, your TECO bills going up and up and up, that affects the amount we receive in franchise fees. Intergovernmental revenue is down twenty-eight percent due to the timing of grants and capital projects, and that will increase again with the Douglas Re-budgeting. Charges for services are up one point nine percent, and that's revenues from your utility bills, from your recreation program fees, and fees that relate to some planning services. Fire, excuse me, fines and forfeiture revenue is expected to remain flat. Miscellaneous revenue is expected to increase sixty-two point eight percent. This category includes investment earnings, administrative costs, allocations from enterprise funds for governmental services like human resources that are paid for out of the general fund. Transfers are down thirty-two point five percent due to the suspension of the public safety impact fund transfer, and appropriate reserve or use of prior-year funds is down due to a significant number of PO carryovers in the prior year in the capital improvement fund and the water sewer operating fund, including for those projects like Harbor Palms, Oldsmar Trail Phase Six, and the re-irration system improvements at the WRF. Okay, so on the next couple of slides, we'll run through some of the more significant sources in each of those general revenue categories, kind of go into a little bit more detail as to exactly what's rolled up in that, in each category. And so we've got Ad Valorem, local option, insurance premium, utility, communication, and local business tax receipts, all rolling up into that taxes category that you all saw on the previous slides. Within Ad Valorem, we have real property and TPP, as we talked about earlier, and within local option taxes, we include penny for Pinellas and local option fuel taxes. Insurance premium taxes show up on your insurance bills and go in part to fund benefits for firefighters. Utility tax revenue is received from both TECO and propane natural gas providers. Communication services taxes show up on your cable and some phone bills, and local business tax receipts are paid to the city by businesses operating within city limits. Within the permits and fees category, we saw earlier we've got franchise fees, including those for TECO and clear water gas, impact fees on new development in the city, and other permits and fees such as those assessed on local permits, those not processed by the county. Intergovernmental revenue includes grant funds, half-cent sales tax, state revenue sharing, local grants, and ARPA. The charges for services category includes those found on your utility bills and your program fees, such as the recreation program fees, which have been knocking it out of the park this year. Okay, there you go, Chip. That one was for you, knocking it out of the park, okay.
Parks and Rec.
That's well done.
Fines and forfeitures include, I did have to script that, by the way, just so you know.
Hold it up perfectly.
Fines and forfeitures include the city's portion of traffic tickets and the city's code enforcement violation revenue. Also in miscellaneous revenue, we have investment earnings, shelter rentals, donations, sales of used vehicle and equipment, and those administrative cost allocations. Transfers include those funds moved between funds and include those for debt service, like the public safety impact fund also, which was, as you mentioned, was suspended for fiscal twenty-four, and the use of impact funds for capital projects. There is no new debt in twenty-four, as we've talked about, and finally, we have appropriate reserve or funds saved in prior years brought forward to fund current operations and projects. And again, in total, citywide budget, fifty million two hundred and eighteen thousand forty-five dollars. Okay, so we've had this nice brief overview of the city's budget as a whole, right? Yeah, brief, good. It's time to look at each of the funds individually in more detail, yes, as promised, starting with the general fund. So for those following along in your budget book, we're on page fifty-three now. All right, real progress.
Moving along.
Yeah. Okay, so as our first governmental fund, we're going to talk about in detail, the general fund represents eighteen million seventy-one thousand fifty-five dollars in total for fiscal twenty-four. In this expenditure summary chart, you can see here we've got personal services represent fifty-eight percent of the fund, operating represents thirty-two percent of the fund expenditures, capital outlay, such as vehicles and equipment, this doesn't include very large projects, but the equipment needed to operate general government activities is four percent, transfers two percent, and contingency reserve four percent, or just over seven hundred thousand dollars. Presented here with a little historical twist, we can see that the personnel services are up about five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars or five percent, with the reduction in authorized positions in general fund offsetting some of those increases in personnel costs. Operating expenditures are up about a hundred thousand dollars or two percent. Capital outlay is down six hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars or forty-five percent due to building improvements through the city that have, are either in progress this year or have been completed in fiscal twenty-three, like some of the roofing, like at the rec center, and some of those HVAC projects. Transfers are down due to the suspension of the public safety impact fund transfer, and there's that three hundred and eighty thousand dollars going out to the Harbor Palms Debt Service Fund. Reserves are up six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars from the fiscal twenty-three revised budget, and again, this is an intentional approach by staff to budget conservatively and prepare for continuing cost escalations should they arise next year. These funds may be utilized during the fiscal year pending council authorization. Okay, so the other side, the revenue side for general fund, we see taxes represent fifty-five percent of revenues, permits and fees nine percent, intergovernmental revenue fifteen percent, charges for services two percent, miscellaneous revenue seven percent, appropriate reserves eleven percent, and fines and forfeitures one percent. Shown here, we can see taxes are projected to be up to about six hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars in general fund or six point eight percent. Most of this comes from the growth in Ad Valorem taxes, and that's about five hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of that increase, and some of that is from the utility taxes, like we talked about earlier. Communication services taxes are anticipated to remain flat. Permits and fees are up two hundred thousand dollars for fiscal twenty-four, representing an increase in those TECO franchise fees. Intergovernmental revenue is down a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars or five percent as anticipated increases in state shared revenues and half-cent sales tax are going to be offset a little bit by a decrease in ARPA revenues that we used to cover one-time equipment purchases in prior years, so we won't have those in fiscal twenty-four going forward in general fund. And finally, miscellaneous revenue is projected to increase and includes those administrative cost allocations from the three enterprise funds to cover the personnel and other administrative costs incurred by the general fund on their behalf. This category also includes investment earnings, which I'm happy to say we're having a good year. This may be another area where you'll see a change between proposed and final budgets. So overall, general fund up four hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars or two point five percent. Okay, I'm excited to say we're through the overview section of the presentation. So our plan now is to start going into a detailed review of each division's budget, starting with the general fund and progressing through the city's fund structure. So without further ado, I'd like to turn things over to your esteemed charter official and city clerk, Kristen Garcia, to kick us off with the city council division. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Garrett. Good evening, council. Kristen Garcia, city clerk. The service program for city council. City council provides leadership and guidance for effective operations through policy. City council appoints charter officials, conducts public hearings, adopts ordinances and resolutions, including the annual budget, that's the process we're in now, and milage rate, approves proposals, grants, and agreements, presents awards and proclamations, and authorizes city negotiations. So these are some highlights of the city council budget. The annual volunteer appreciation dinner and gift, seven thousand. Veterans Wall Engraving, one thousand five hundred. The Veterans Wall located at Oldsmar Veterans Memorial Park is engraved once a year. Names of those selected by the Veterans Advisory Board are read aloud during the annual Veterans Day Ceremony held on November eleventh. Janus Miller Citizens Academy, two thousand three hundred. Citizens Academy is held every September to November for eight to nine weeks. Citizens Academy is a great way for Oldsmar citizens to learn more about how their government works. Classes use hands-on activities and lectures to teach how city government affects the quality of life here in Oldsmar. This line item provides food and name tags for that academy. Annual Employee Gift, seven thousand. Employee Action Committee selects gifts for all city employees annually. It's about thirty dollars per employee. Council Awards Program, two thousand three hundred. Awards include Business of the Quarter Award, which highlights businesses here in Oldsmar, Council Manager Award, which highlights citizens and groups in Oldsmar. Council Swearing and Reception, five hundred. The municipal election will be held on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Council members will be sworn in on March twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. A swearing and reception will be held that evening for the public to attend. John Maroney Foundation Dinner, seven fifty. This is an annual law enforcement and first responder appreciation dinner honoring Pinellas County law enforcement and first responders. Mayor's Breakfast Sponsorship, six hundred. It's a chamber event that is held in conjunction with Safety Harbor Chamber, and it's held in December. Council Shirts, five hundred. Mayor and council are all budgeted for two shirts.
I ain't got my shirts the last four years. I have two shirts total. Are you guys using all the shirts?
Okay, highlights continued. So here's the dues that council pays, well, the city pays for council. Florida League of Cities Dues, two thousand two hundred. Suncoast League of Cities Dues, one thousand. Mayor's Council Pinellas County Due, seven fifty. Florida League of Mayor's Dues, four seventy-five. Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council Dues, two thousand. And then we get into the travel and training budget and education for our council, that's twelve thousand total. It includes two thousand for mayor's travel and one thousand five hundred for each council member's travel, and it also includes one thousand five hundred for the Florida League of Cities Conference Registration for mayor and two council members, or just three council members. Includes two thousand for email registration that is done by the Florida League of Cities. That could be four council members, and includes five hundred for the Suncoast League of Cities Legislative Delegation, and that's just to Tallahassee during legislative session. And if there's no discussion, we can move on to the aid to private, to government and private agencies.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? All right. Go ahead.
This line item for aid to government and private agencies has a budgeted amount of seventy-five thousand. As you're all aware, the city received thirteen applications equating to a hundred and sixty-eight thousand eight hundred and two dollars. Yesterday, three sixty eats rescinded their application, leaving twelve applications for a total of one hundred and forty-eight six hundred and two dollars. This year, we requested that each applicant be prepared to present its funding request in three minutes. Before each applicant, I will state how much the request is, the previous allocation if there is, and if the application is complete. Please feel free to ask questions of the applicant while they are here at the lectern.
Counsel, it's important to note that while I marked each application as having a general public purpose, the determination of what constitutes a valid municipal purpose for the expenditure of municipal funds is a factual determination to be made by the city council. So I ask that you take that under consideration when evaluating the applications to ensure further expensive funding for municipal purpose. I will bring forth formal agreements with the recipients to you to consider at a council meeting in the fall.
All right. Kristen, you want to come back up?
And, yeah, and with that, we will, we will start with the presentations, and we'll go in alphabetical order.
Okay.
Catholic Charities, Diocese of St. Petersburg, Pinellas Hope. We marked this application as not completed as the tax returns were not the most recent tax returns that we requested. The request is for three thousand five hundred. They were awarded two thousand five hundred last year, and there is a representative here to speak.
My name's Joe Pondolfino. I'm the director of Pinellas Hope with Catholic Charities. And I want to thank you for inviting us and the support you've given us in the past, and just the fact that you don't turn a blind eye to the problem of homelessness in our county. At any given time, there's about 26,000 homeless people in the state of Florida, and Pinellas County has about a tenth of them right here, and they're spread out throughout the whole county. Some of you may know Pinellas Hope has been around a while. We've been around since 2007, and it started as a result of a problem in St. Petersburg. There was encampments, tent cities, people all over in the downtown area, and they thought it was a good idea to slash the tents and get rid of that problem. Well, it just created another problem, obviously, and it displaced a whole bunch of people. Catholic Charities stepped in, and they started a pilot project to just temporarily house these people in tents, and it was over in the Clearwater area. That was 15 years ago, so our pilot project is still going on. Right now, we serve about over 1,000 people a year, homeless individuals, in our shelter, and we have a pretty good track record. We house successfully about 50% of the people that come through our doors, which might not seem like a lot, but I'll tell you, that takes a lot of work to house that many people in this environment. As you know, rents have increased, housing has exploded, and it's getting harder and harder to house people. The median housing cost right now is $410,000. Rents have gone up, and the amount of rental units have gone down. And our county is not getting any bigger, as in space, it's getting more crowded. We are, we serve people of all walks of life that come here, and it really only takes a perfect storm for anybody to end up homeless. What we're seeing now more and more of is elderly people that come through our doors. I took in 17 new people today, and probably almost half of them are over 60 years old. I have several people in their 80s, I have people in their 70s, and it's just becoming harder and harder, to tell you the truth. We get people who are on a fixed income, making $914 a month, and then we're tasked with trying to find a place for them to go. If they have one eviction on their record, that just confounds the problem. Luckily, I have great staff. We work, collaborate within the community. There's some people on here that I collaborate with. 360 Eats, they come and serve us once a month, and collaboration really is the key.
Thank you very much.
Time is up.
Time is up. So you're...
That was fast.
Last year, you received 2,500, and you're looking for 3,500, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does the three minutes include questions, or are questions after the three minutes? Oh, questions now, okay. Just want to follow the procedure and make sure it's the same for everybody.
You have a question, go ahead.
I saw on your application that you noted of all the 18,000 or so folks that you serve, I'm sorry, 18,686 that you serve, approximately 12 of them were Oldsmar residents or property owners last year, and 15 are expected to be this upcoming year?
Yeah, and that's true. I mean, we're located in the heart of Pinellas County, and Oldsmar is over here a little bit, so our services are over there. So we don't directly get people automatically right from Oldsmar that's identified, but people gravitate over there.
Yeah.
And having our services over there actually keep some homeless people from coming over here, too, I think, so. Yeah, I mean, they go where the services are, and we have, and that's where our service is.
So that kind of answers one of my questions, because I intend to ask everybody kind of similarly how their organization serves or touches the residents of Oldsmar. If you had to kind of summarize, what municipal purpose does your organization serve? That phrase municipal purpose is really important to me. That's the lawyer in me, the fact finder, you know, trying to really boil it down, because we have requests in an amount that is double what we have to hand out. So if you have any thoughts on that, I would love to hear them.
Okay, I'm not a lawyer, I'm a social worker.
I know.
When you say municipal benefits is to help this city itself, right?
Yeah, this city, the city of Oldsmar.
The city of Oldsmar. It takes a village, that's all I can say, is that we are part of this solution here. And if we continue to turn a blind eye to it, we have to work together. And it's true that we don't get a lot of direct referrals, "Oh, I'm in Oldsmar, can I get in?" But we have a lot of people that are from this area. But what we do is when we have people that come into our shelter, we ask them, "Well, where did you spend last night?" Well, they might not have been here last night, but they spend time here, and then they come over to Clearwater area, and that's what it's, that's what's listed.
So that's where you're tracking those numbers?
Yes, yeah, where did you, where did you sleep last night?
Thank you for that clarification, I really appreciate it.
You bet.
Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
No questions.
Thank you very much.
The next funding request is Clearwater for Youth. This application was completed. The request is for 7,500, and there is a representative here tonight.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Thank you for coming out.
Absolutely, thank you for having us, thank you, council. My name is Brooke Bennett, and I am the Development Manager for CFY. And we're thrilled to be here and thrilled to be starting to expand within the city of Oldsmar. First, I want to give you a little bit of background on CFY. We were established in 1972. We were really the programmers, and this is where youth kids were able to play sports. Since '21 and coming out of COVID, we've kind of had a rebranding, and that's given us the opportunity to expand outside of the city of Clearwater. And that's really under our guidance of our new executive director, Kevin Dunbar. And we really focus on our giving in three pillars. Athletic grants, education, and then the Title I Water Safety Program, which is our newest. We are set up, very luckily, that we have an endowment so that our administration costs are covered, so that every dollar donated to CFY does support a child. We've been recognized as a top nonprofit. Jess actually knew to us yesterday, Charity Navigator came forward and gave us four stars, which is their highest honor. We're recognized by great nonprofits for two years in a row as a top charity, and Guide Star has given us their highest honor as Platinum Transparency. To bring us to the point of why we're here and why we've submitted our grant to the city of Oldsmar is the expansion that we have. So since '22, we have given nearly $13,000 to North Pinellas Youth Football Program in athletic reimbursement and also equipment grants. We're working with Parks and Rec to kind of figure out under our pillar where the need is for the city of Oldsmar, and that's where our request comes in for the 7,500. Oldsmar Little League, Oldsmar Soccer, and we do facilitate those programs countywide. So to give you an idea, in 2022, we served about 25 programs within Pinellas County in a range of about $450,000. We're only halfway through 2023 right now, and we're on track to fund about $800,000. That's 10,000 children, and of course, our mission, and we've talked about inflation, is that no child should go without playing youth sports, no matter what their financial barriers they have within their families.
All right, thank you very much.
No beepers. Time for questions.
Any questions at this end over here?
Just the same question that Councilmember Gannon had for the previous applicant. So the number is 275, is what was projected last year, and then it's projected this year to be 600.
Correct.
So the request, we didn't receive one last year, but we still, there was a service provided to, I'm guessing the amount of kids?
Correct, so we did provide in 2022 two different grants to North Pinellas, which has a practice here in the city of Oldsmar. And we've just expanded outside of the city of Clearwater, so we're really trying to branch out and get into these communities and get into these cities before we really start asking for the need for us to do more. So we wanted to establish ourselves, kind of let you guys know what we are doing and what we are here to do, and how we are going to serve the youth within your city.
Okay.
Anything else?
Nothing for me.
Vice Mayor, yes.
Just to clarify with that 275 number again, so that would be 275 children or adults related to the Panther football team program?
Correct, 275 children, yes. And that's out of about 10,000 that we serve throughout the county.
Kevin, you want to say something?
Yeah, fine, ma'am, mayor, thank you. I'm Kevin Dunbar, the executive director of CFY. So what, the request that you have before you is because, as Brooke has said, we have branched out, and we are actively looking to support youth athletics here in Oldsmar. We are estimating that next year, that giving will be about in the $20,000 to $25,000 range. We make sure that every child can play a sport. We make sure that all the kids have safe equipment. We think that those are paramount pillars. As Brooke mentioned, we have pillars. We also do college grants for college for kids to go to school. There are Oldsmar students who we have funded up to $10,000 to go to college. Over the last two years, we have committed a half a million dollars to education of 73 kids, either working with Pinellas Education Foundation or through our grant program. So as Brooke mentioned, one of the reasons we go by CFY is it's not Clearwater any longer. It's the whole county. We branched out early, looking to work with Dunedin, looking to work with Oldsmar. City of Clearwater has been a huge contributor, as well as Dunedin and other communities. So we're looking to help out the children of your community to make sure every child can play and your registration fees stay low. Final note, Brooke is going to be with Matt Samuelson from the Panther Program on Good Day Tampa Bay in two weeks, talking about the giving and what we do, because we are currently funding seven different football programs, that being one of the programs.
Thank you. Councilmember Gannon, you have any questions?
No, that...
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
We appreciate you coming out.
Thank you, mayor.
Our next funding request is Keep Pinellas Beautiful. The application was not completed as no funding report was submitted. This request is for 750. They were awarded 500 last year. And let's see if there's a representative here. Great.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Devin Frank. I'm the Education Program Coordinator with Keep Pinellas Beautiful, your local Keep America Beautiful affiliate. I'm very honored to have been invited here today to tell you about our city membership program. The city of Oldsmar has been a proud member of this program in the past, and we hope you will opt to continue enrolling in this program. As you know, KPB has been an integral part of the Pinellas County community for over 30 years. Through our education, engagement, and empowerment efforts, our vision is to create a culture of environmentally responsible citizens within and throughout Pinellas County. In just Oldsmar alone, over the last two years, we've engaged over 120 volunteers at 50 events, removing 480 pounds of litter, saving the city's taxpayers an estimated $10,160. To help support the growth of our programming, we created our KPB Annual City Membership Program. So for $750 donation, your city will be recognized as a city partner of KPB on our website and on our 2024 volunteer t-shirts. You'll also receive special recognition on our weekly email newsletters, annual report, and our annual luncheon. A member window decal will also be provided to be displayed at your city office. So the main purpose of becoming a KPB city member is that it helps KPB to be here for your city. I've brought many copies of last year's KPB Annual Report, which, along with containing great information about our programs and events, also has our contact information. So additionally, we have a litter hotline, one of the many services that we provide. When a resident spots a large illegal dumping of litter, they can call our hotline, and we'll come to dispose of it properly. So you're welcome to share our hotline with everyone in your city. That is 727-210-GONE, in case anyone's curious. And finally, we'd love for the city of Oldsmar to take part in our two major events each year, the Great American Cleanup in the Spring and the International Coastal Cleanup in the Fall. We'd love for Oldsmar to host a site or sites for cleanups during both events. We need your help to keep Oldsmar beautiful. So if you would like to have a city of Oldsmar-led cleanup or similar environmental programming at any time throughout the year, all you need to do is reach out, and we're more than happy to get that set up with you. So our organization relies on volunteers and dedicated network of partners to accomplish all that we do in Pinellas County. We are committed to our community and are proud to say that, to date, 17 of the 24 municipalities in the county have joined our cause. So we hope you guys will consider supporting our mission to keep Pinellas beautiful in 2024. Thank you so much for your consideration, and let me know if you have any questions.
Wonderful, thank you for your presentation. Any questions?
I do have these reports for you guys, too, in case you want to...
Bring them up. If you'd like to hand them out. When was the last time you did a cleanup here in Oldsmar? Do you remember when that was?
Off the top of my head, I don't, but it is something I can look up and touch you guys, no, for sure.
Any other questions? Councilmember Gannon?
Thank you, mayor. Just briefly, it shows, of course, your organization and mission is different, you know, every organization and mission is different, but I saw that you engaged 150 volunteers in the city of Oldsmar this past year. Are those...
The last two years combined.
Oh, the last years combined, okay.
Yeah.
So those are instances of volunteerism or 150 unique individuals?
That's a good question. Instances of volunteerism, so it could have been the same individuals showing up at the same events, which, there are some that do come to events regularly, but we always do have, it's one of the questions we love asking at our events, is whose first time is this, doing a beach cleanup, or you know, whatever it is? And there's always people who raise their hands, and it's an eye-opening experience for sure for them.
So your organization's request is for us to continue as a member, and it's a membership fee as opposed to providing a particular service in return? Does that...
Correct, yeah, yeah, and it just allows us to be able to help the city essentially do more of our programming within the city as well. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Greber, anything?
It's, so over the last two years, you've engaged over 150 volunteers in the city. Where in particular, like where could we have seen you, you know, walking around with your pickup sticks and...
Sure. Off the top of my head, I don't have a list of all the events that we did, so I don't want to say anything wrong, but I'm more than happy to actually get a list for you guys and send it to the email or however you wish me to send it.
Yeah, I just, I think it's more of the question, and I think we're going to have it probably as a static question throughout the night, is if the 150 volunteers, and there was a direct municipal purpose because they were cleaning the streets or something, but we don't have that specific information in order to base any determination off of, correct?
Not that I've brought with me for tonight, but I'm more than happy to share that. We can share that information, look it up and share it easily.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate you coming out tonight.
Yeah, have a great night, everybody.
The next funding request will be the Maddy Williams Neighborhood Family Center. The application was completed. Their request is for 28,000. They were awarded 25,000 last year, and a representative is here to present.
Good evening, Janet Hooper, Executive Director of the Maddy Williams Neighborhood Family Center. I know I'm like a bad penny to keep showing up. I did temporarily retire, but I guess that didn't stay long, so...
Unretired.
So I'm unretired, and so here I am. Maddy Williams Neighborhood Family Center has been serving struggling families in Oldsmar for as long as I was at the center, for more than 15 years. We have a long history of partnership with the city of Oldsmar. We've partnered with the school system, we partner with the Chamber, we partner with Oldsmar Cares. This most recent partnership with the Chamber, we have a family support person that is coming and staying two times a week to help residents who are applying for financial assistance for utility support. There are a lot of people out there hurting, just so you know. Our food pantry is weekly. I know that Oldsmar Cares gives out our name because they do monthly, but we do weekly. We serve over 2,000 Oldsmar residents this year so far. So for years, we've been here to try and help the residents that have needs. I will end with just one story, and that was recently, we tried to stay local when we get a service. We had our tablecloths, they need to be laundered, we took them to the Oldsmar place, and the woman comes out and looks at the truck and says, "Are they up on Martin Luther King?" "Yeah." "Are you with them?" "Yeah." You guys, she almost started crying, because several years ago, when she was down and out, Maddy Williams was there to help her and her kids get through a tough time. And that's all I can tell you. That's what we do, that's what we've done. That's what we've done. She's not the only one. I've heard it a lot from a lot of people all over the four zip codes that we serve. The funding we get from Oldsmar stays to help Oldsmar residents. That's how we do it. Safety Harbor money stays to help Safety Harbor residents. That is, we have separate line items for each, so I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you so much for coming out tonight. Any questions?
Yeah, I got one.
Vice Mayor?
Um, just going off of what you said there with the, the monies kind of staying allocated based on the specific region, sorry, I'm trying to, I'm getting close because it's in fine print here. For those, for those salaries, the salary bucket, you've got a total of ten thousand, which you have allocated to an administrative assistant and a family support specialist. So, those two individuals, those are two individuals.
Right, two separate individuals. The one is the one that comes here twice a week, and the other one is the one that then processes all the material through the system. So, we share the costs across, that is shared across all the, the different groups, but for the most part.
That's kind of a sliver of their?
Yeah. It's just a sliver of the cost to have, to track. We track everything. We use something called M-Focus Track Solutions to track all of the data on everybody that receives services from us.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anything else? Councilor Gannon, you have something?
She kind of answered my questions already about the number of residents served nineteen-hundred-ninety-four, and then this year projected to be twenty-five hundred, and you kind of explained the division between Safety Harbor and Oldsmar. In the, I guess, I mean, you're not looking at what I'm looking at, but in the application, the line above explains the number of total individuals served by the organization. It appears that Oldsmar makes a, possibly a larger percentage of that now than Safety Harbor? Is that correct? Or?
No, it's not larger, but it's, it, they're more even split across the three than it has been in the past.
Okay.
Because of the growing need.
The number is not necessarily equate to amount, the doll, in other words, the dollars don't necessarily equal the number of people served.
No, no, it doesn't.
That makes more sense, thank you.
And each city gives a different amount of money to, to serve different people. So, we've increased the family support funding for Oldsmar residents, so there'll be more Oldsmar residents taking advantage of that.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have, I have one question.
One question, I'm sorry. And it's actually a general question that's going to go to all, and maybe it's a better
question for Felicia, but there's no way to identify the incorporated versus non-incorporated Oldsmar into that number of people that are in that, is there? Okay, thank you.
Well, I can, we can do that by, by residency.
Okay, thank you.
The next funding request will be Neighborly Care Network Meals on Wheels. The application was completed. The request is for ten thousand five-five-two. They were awarded five thousand last year.
Welcome, thank you for coming.
I'm very happy to be here, thank you very much. My name is Susan McIntyre. I serve as the Development Director at Neighborly Senior Care. I do want to thank you for the opportunity to apply again. You folks have been supporting Neighborly and its services to seniors for many, many, many years faithfully. And we have served in what we submitted to you sixty-two, as of the twenty-twenty-two, end of twenty-twenty-two, sixty-two Oldsmar residents for either meals on wheels, adult daycare, senior dining, nutrition, counseling or education, and transportation. When Neighborly volunteers deliver a meal to any of these sixty-two Oldsmar residents, they also deliver encouragement, reassurance, and a smile. That volunteer, perhaps one of the fifteen Oldsmar residents who volunteer and live in Oldsmar, may be the only human being that client sees that day. If the volunteers notice anything that seems off with one of their regular Meals on Wheels clients, they can note a change of condition, and now we can do it in real time on a tablet so that our staff is made aware of it immediately. Now, if there's an emergency, and unfortunately there are, our volunteers are able to either call nine-one-one, they have found seniors on the floor, who sometimes have been there for hours or days. And again, they're not seeing anybody else. So, it's our volunteers that are addressing that, and that way Neighborly can respond as well. If it's not an immediate emergency, we can just report and then have the family notified. So, for a lot of people whose families are in other parts of the country, this is a very valuable service in allowing people to remain safely at home. So, as I said, volunteers will notice this. The volunteers also serve at our senior dining. They also serve at our adult daycare, and, but our most important one right now is the Meals on Wheels. We have a waiting list of twelve-hundred-forty-nine people waiting for services in Pinellas County. Twenty of those are in Oldsmar. A senior who receives daily-delivered meals experiences the greatest improvements in health and quality of life compared to a senior who receives frozen, weekly-delivered meals or no meals at all. We know that human touch is making a difference. Not only does research show it, but we do annual surveys. In addition, if, if you know anything about seniors, they don't hold back if they have any criticism at all, but they also let us know what, what, what our service means to them, and very frequently, tearfully. So, our transportation program, which for the first time, I'll stop.
Thank you very much. Thanks for coming out. All right, questions? Councilor Greber?
Just, it's a very specific five-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two dollar increase. I'm just wondering how that, the math was calculated for that specific number.
It was very bold. You have generously been giving us five thousand dollars for many years. What we do is, we've got to raise the ten percent match for what services cost, and so at the, in calendar year twenty-twenty-two, ten percent, the ten percent match would be one-hundred-eight-thousand-five-hundred-and-fifty-two. So, we are asking for ten percent of that as our match, and I know it's bold. It's very hard to sit here with people who do work like I do and say, oh, but, but my, my clients are really, really desperate. I mean, it's an awful game that we're playing, but the thing is, is that's what we need to do. We have had to cut down on transportation for the first time and have a waiting list and cutting back services because of funding, and that's why I, I made that increased request.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you again for your consideration.
The next funding request will be Oldsmar Cares. The application was not completed as no funding report was submitted. The request is for forty thousand. They were awarded twenty-seven, twenty-seven-thousand-five-hundred last year, and there is a representative here.
Joanne Fitzpatrick, five-oh-two Buckingham Avenue, Oldsmar Cares volunteer. Everyone here that knows me knows that no one at Oldsmar Cares wants me to speak. Oldsmar Cares is, we serve four zip codes, but the majority of the people that we serve are in Oldsmar, probably eighty-five percent. We provide food and clothing to all four zip codes. We provide financial assistance to Oldsmar residents only. That is, utility assistance, rent assistance, up to two hundred dollars a year. You just have to be an Oldsmar resident and come in with your utility or rent, and we get it paid for you. Then we have another program, which is called Patchwork Grant, which is for above the, if someone needs more than two hundred dollars, you know, this year particularly, we've had a lot of people that have had water leaks, that have had enormous bills that could not afford it. So, that would be, fall into our Patchwork Grant category, which is up like a hundred and twenty percent this year. We serve a ton of seniors on fixed incomes that, you know, they, they just don't have a choice. Our donations were down fifteen percent this last fiscal year, and we have people coming in that a few years ago were donating to us. Our Food for Kids program, the last school year, we provided every week food for, seven meals for the kids to take home at Forest Lakes and Oldsmar Elementary. That was up to forty-eight children this school year. I'm sure that will increase. So, there's just a big need right now. Our food costs were up a hundred and twenty-nine percent from last year, so that, that's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you for coming out, we really appreciate it. Councilor Gannon, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I've been reviewing the Form nine-nineties. It appears that most organizations submitted their twenty-twenty Form nine-ninety, which makes sense based on the reporting here. But the one I'm looking for, for Oldsmar Cares reflects that there is no executive director salary or.
We are a hundred percent volunteer organization. No one gets paid.
I want to make sure that, that's still the case, because that is different than the other organizations here today.
Yeah, everyone there is, is volunteer. There's no money exchanging hands for anyone.
It's pretty amazing.
And then, oh, and the other thing that I also wanted to mention is that we did provide food, as Janet mentioned, since COVID, twice a month, but starting this month, we, we are scaling back to once a month for households, but we still do provide, we're open six days a week, and any homeless can come in all six days and get sandwiches, fruit, something to drink. So, that is, unfortunately, we have a lot of homeless people here in, in Oldsmar, so.
Anything else? Vice Mayor?
No.
Thank you very much for your time, appreciate it.
The next funding request is Oldsmar Friends of the Arts. The application was not completed as it was not fully filled out and no funding report was submitted. Request is for six thousand. They were awarded six thousand last year, and there is a representative here to present.
I wonder who it is.
Sue DeGanis Cologne, four-oh-two Arlington Avenue East, Oldsmar, Director of the Opal Theater Program and Masuda's Dancers Program with the City of Oldsmar. I have brought a report that I would like, if it's appropriate, to pass out, that I've asked my board member, Ms. Daphne, who is also our chamber rep liaison and new board member joining us. This passed, this sheet that we're passing out is a projected budget for this upcoming performance. I want to start off by saying a big thank you. Forgive me with my glasses, I am semi-blind and one eye, so I'm going to do my best here. I want to start with a big thank you to council staff and the community for their continued support of our Opal Theater Program through our unique partnership. And as many of you know, that unique partnership is a subcontracted program that I am the director of, that the Oldsmar Friends of the Arts are the producers of the performances. And we have been proud to take on that role as the official producers for the Opal Theater performances in conjunction with the city sponsorship and the subcontracted theater program. We're honored to be a part of this special relationship with the city that benefits our students and the community. The sponsorship funds received by the City of Oldsmar have been greatly appreciated by our program, our students, and our families. And as many know, obviously, as our student base increases, our budget needs grow as well. For example, we've had fifteen students in the past. This show, we have twenty-four students, and we have hopes in the future to include up to forty students within our performances. I have supplied you a brief budget for our upcoming performance to give you a better overview of our program and how the funds are used. Peter Pan Junior costs are estimated at ninety-five-hundred with income of approximately seventy-eight-hundred, and that includes the half of the six thousand dollars or three thousand dollars that the city sponsors us to help produce these shows. I wanted to also point out and keep in mind that this is a subcontracted program that sometimes get overlooked, that the income for the City of Oldsmar brings in an estimated thirty-seven-hundred dollars alone in just the Oldsmar, or the Opal Theater Program that goes to the City of Oldsmar, and quite a bit more if you add in Masuda's Dancers to the program. So, some of this money routes back around, which I think is really great, and helps cover costs for space and things like that as well. In our unique partnership, we'd like to reiterate that our current sponsorship fund amounts, as I mentioned in the past, only helps to sustain one current program. It does not allow any room for growth. One of our many goals with the current Opal Theater Program is to purchase eighteen months of scripts in advance or three shows. That costs us approximately thirty-two-hundred dollars right off the top. This is critical for inclusion in playbills and future promotion of auditions and performances. We cannot even list the name of a show until licensing is purchased. Boy, that went fast.
Yes, it did.
Okay.
So, thank you so much.
I'm hoping there's some questions.
Any questions for Suda today?
How many students did you say were in the program last year?
Well, I, I did do some, actually, I did some notes that I would like to share. I did a number over the shows, performances, students, audiences for Masuda's Dancers, Opal Theater, and the community chorus that performs once a year. We touch over three thousand lives throughout all of our programs. That's, you know, families in attendance, that's students that actually participate in the program, et cetera. So, we, and that's each year, and it grows. As you guys know, we've had some shows that have had six-hundred-and-fifty guests at them. We average three to four hundred guests. The students in the Opal Program right now are twenty-four. The dance program is twenty-five. We can hold up to forty in both programs, and of course, as the programs grow, so do the expenses. And as you can see, like rental of microphones and things like that, as we put more students in, we get quite a bit more increases. I do like to mention that this is the first time hearing that we did not have all of our documentation. So, please get with me on whatever we're missing, because we've done this a couple of years, and so I thought we knew the pattern, and obviously, I just heard now that we have not submitted everything, so please let me know anything else that is needed.
Vice Mayor, you have any questions?
No questions.
Any questions over here? Suda, I have one question. I, I want to say I really do appreciate you giving us this budget worksheet. I know that you charge for advertising in your little magazine. Is that included here? I didn't see that.
Yeah, there is a note there that says roughly eighteen-hundred is the income from the playbill advertising. Yep.
Eighteen ninety-six, thank you.
Yeah, we try as much as we can to bring in money from all of the sources, as well as raising funds ourselves.
Right, go ahead, thank you so much.
Okay. And I had this down to three minutes, and I still couldn't make it in three minutes. Thank you very much.
The next request is Oldsmar Neighborhood Association. The application was not completed as there was not a list of directors submitted tax returns or a funding report. Request is for ten thousand. They were awarded two thousand five hundred last year.
So, Vince Albanese, Oldsmar Neighborhood Association. So, as you know, we are fairly new. We have no paid directors. There's no paid staff with the Neighborhood Association. We also unique in the sense that our mission is clearly tied to lessening the burden of government. So, what we look at first are council priorities and attempt to align ourselves with that. In line with that, we have, as you also know, our funding primarily has come from our good relationship with the Chamber of Commerce. The, the millions of dollars returned to small business through the Employee Retention Credit Program, even though the IRS pays unbearably slow, that money, as it trickles in, all of that's coming back into the City of Oldsmar. In the original request, we had been optimistic about the Paint the Pavement Program and supporting that. That program has been slow to develop. Everything that I discuss, or the funding request here, is what we would like you to match from a challenge perspective. We will show up with the money. We will show up with the money and the, the money we're looking for a match here. In light of the conservative nature of where we are with everything else, there are other programs specifically related to the council's priorities around expanding community engagement and safe routes to the school in an effort to support your good work there with FDOT and bringing that. We have three, three programs really underneath that that we're supporting and funding. So the Walking School Bus Program, the Eliza's Mileage Club. And we consider Paint the Pavement to be a, a stepping stone toward the safe routes to school since we're tying the hope to tie together the messaging there along with this. In addition to that, in the community engagement side, we have a neighborhood council forming. We had 50 people or so at the Tico Hall last week. We are excited about the potential and want to approach the city about helping with a CERT program. We have something called Hurricane Buddies. We want to be in line with what the city is doing or would like to do with regard to safety. So those programs in total are what we're looking for, a blend of funding with the idea that we would approach city council and saying that we have raised money, we have this specific, we've run it by our city manager and the other appropriate parties, and then I would request funding.
All right, thank you, Vince. Any questions for Vince? Vice Mayor?
What was the donation last year used for? Was it the laptops, the electronics?
No, it was all put toward the, the programs that we supported here, the Mileage Club and all those kinds of programs. It was all in there.
All right, thank you, Vince.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming out tonight.
The next request is Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, Pinellas Safe Harbor. The application was not completed as no tax returns were submitted. Request is for $2,500. They were awarded $2,500 last year. And there is a representative here to present.
Good evening. My name's Melvin Jackson. I am our North District Station Commander. Let's give you a little bit of background on Pinellas Safe Harbor. Safe Harbor opened in January of 2011 as a jail diversion emergency shelter. The shelter was specifically created to aid the criminally justice-involved homeless within the county. As of right now, Pinellas Safe Harbor is the only shelter within the county that is open 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. And this gives law enforcement an opportunity to every day have somewhere to take these homeless folks. On average, we see about 300 residents daily. We have a total capacity of up to 470 residents per day. Annually, we're looking at about 1,000 homeless individuals who get out of jail and go to Safe Harbor because they have nowhere else to go. On average, over 5,000 unique individuals use shelter at the Har, at the Safe Harbor, which accounts for about 12,000 intakes annually. Of these, about 600 individuals are veterans, and another 600 folks are chronically homeless. The average age group we're looking at is between 31 and 62 years old. And anyone over the age of 18 is eligible for this. So the facility itself, we offer phones, Wi-Fi, washers, dryers, ironing station, microwaves, televisions, you, you name it. Additionally, each resident has a locker where they can store their own personal residence, or their own items. The annual cost for us to operate the shelter is about $2.2 million. The sheriff budgets for this expenditure yearly, but several cities donate to help us offset the cost, and we really appreciate it. The ca, the cost to house a single individual is about $29 per day. Over the past 12 months, we have successfully placed 309 individuals into permanent housing, a traditional or transitional shelter or some other appropriate treatment programs. Thing specific to the City of Oldsmar, over the past 12 months, Safe Harbor has served and sheltered 27 individuals who have self-reported coming from the City of Oldsmar. And of those individuals, none have been incarcerated or have had to return to a homeless shelter after receiving services. Any questions?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions? Councilwoman Gannon?
Yeah, it's very straightforward.
Anything?
Your ma'am.
Vice Mayor? Councilwoman Gannon?
Answered the questions before I could ask it.
Excellent.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you so much.
The next request is the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce. The application was not completed as no Board of Directors was submitted. Their request is for $35,000, and a representative is here to present. Okay, so for the edu, are we doing Education Foundation?
Sure.
Okay. If we are...
It's just next on the list. That's what they're saying.
Okay. Well, we are doing the Education Foundation next. Their request is for $2,000. They were awarded $2,000 last year. And their application was not completed as no funding report was not submitted.
No, you're fine.
And there was no funding report, really? I thought the whole thing had been completed properly. Gerald Jacobs, immediate past president of the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Education Foundation. And our request is for $2,000. And we give that money, 100% of all the money that we bring in goes back out. We don't have any paid people that work for us. We're all 100% volunteers. The money that we're requesting is going to go to Forest Lake Elementary and Oldsmar Elementary. And to really see the impact of what we do for these schools, I'd like to invite all of you or one of you to go with us for the presentation. You'll be able to see the difference that we make for these schools. It's amazing. You think that, well, they get funded, they get, they've got a budget and everything else. There is an unbelievable amount of things that are not included in their budget, that they have to pay for one way or another or do without. Sometimes they do special projects for the kids that are not funded. Sometimes they do special projects for the faculty that's not funded. I know during the, the worst part of the COVID years, morale boosting for faculty members was, was a big deal because it was really difficult for them to keep a stiff upper lip and, and keep everything going. But the, the difference that we're able to make is this. Every dollar that comes into the school from the, the Pinellas County School Board is allocated for specific purposes right down to thumbtacks. The money that we give them is gratis. We don't expect them to tell us necessarily what we do with it. We don't care what they do with it, as long as they do something responsible with it. We're going to accept that they're responsible adults and let it go with that. And if you'd really like to see what this is about and the difference it makes to them, I invite you to join us when we do the presentation. It's pretty amazing. It really is. It's all about the kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Yes, Councilwoman Gannon.
Thank you, Mayor. So Jill, the, the $2,000 will literally be split down the middle, and it's $1,000 cash to Forest Lakes, $1,000 cash to Oldsmar Elementary.
Correct.
Okay.
Vice Mayor? All right, we're good. Thanks for coming up twice.
Less than three minutes.
Good job.
Thank you.
Okay, the next funding request will be the next one in line on the sheet that you see up there. Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Holiday Sharing Fund, Kids Pedal Power. This application was completed. Request is for $3,000. They were awarded $3,000 last year. And there is a representative here.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. Doug Beavis, Vice President of the Holiday Sharing Fund, 101 State Street West. I also want to thank the city for going back to Parks and Rec. That was a very nice thing. The show would have never lasted seven years if it was called Leisure Services, so... I, I do want to just clarify something, that Holiday Sharing Fund is its own nonprofit. It's really not the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Holiday Sharing Fund. It is strictly the Holiday Sharing Fund. We use the chamber's address because we don't have a physical location. The Holiday Sharing Fund was started about 13 years ago, and it really was a partnership between the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department, the City of Oldsmar, and the Rotary Club. And it started to provide bikes for kids of less fortunate, both in Safety Harbor and in Oldsmar. We provided, last year, we budgeted $3,000 was our request, and that was based on roughly an estimated 30 bikes at $100 apiece. We wound up buying 35 bikes, and now the bikes are about $125 apiece. And then add helmets and things like that, but we kept the request the same. I don't want it to be confused with Holiday Sharing, or with Kids Pedal Power. That is a completely different component. It falls under the Holiday Sharing Fund. But we wanted to do something for kids throughout the year. It's amazing. I went today. We gave four bikes to four young ladies that have never had a bike, much less a new one. So that's completely different. All the money that we are requesting for Holiday Sharing Fund stays right here in the City of Oldsmar. It's vetted through the Pinellas County Sheriff's Department. And it's collaborated with the Safety Harbor so that we may make sure that we're not double dipping. We do the best that we can to make sure that they weren't in the program the year previous and have a bike before. So these are all kids that are right here from our Oldsmar area. Unfortunately, we, you know, we do that. We had to cut it back just because bikes got so expensive. We were funding a lot of other bikes in the area as well, but we just couldn't sustain that. So that's all it is. I just want to clarify that the Holiday Sharing Fund request is strictly for Oldsmar kids and bikes. That's municipal service.
All right, thank you, Doug.
That was actually going to be one of my questions because I see sometimes on, like, social media, I see posts of people getting homes via Habitat for Humanity, working for, excuse me, working for homes for Habitat for Humanity. And then sometimes there's a bike for the kids. And then it's shared by different, you know, members. I'm like, okay, wait. This application is for the purchase of bikes that stay in Oldsmar?
And purchase for the bikes at Christmas. It's through the list.
At the Christmas ones.
At, at the Christmas with the, I think it's the tree at City Hall and the gifts and the Rotary Club. And then we, unfortunately, we never get to see the reaction from the kids.
But their privacy is... Right, but their privacy is important.
We give them to the Rotary, and Sheriff's Department coordinates, was picking up of them from the council chambers. And when we first did the Kids Pedal Power, we knew it was a relationship that was great because it, it takes what we're doing and takes it countywide. So, but completely separate.
Completely separate, okay.
Oh, it falls under the same 501(c)(3), but the funding, this funding is just for the bikes at Christmas, for the kids of Oldsmar.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and we have no salaries.
Thank you.
The last funding request will be the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce. The application was not completed as no Board of Directors was submitted. And their request is for $35,000, and they are here to present.
The Board of Directors is on the second page.
Yeah, it's on there. I was going to say, it's, it's on there.
The other one, it was on the back. It was on the last page.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Staff. Mark Howe, President and CEO of the Upper Tampa Bay Chamber, 508 Pine Avenue South, Oldsmar. Due to the increase in expenses for events and 400% increase in liability insurance, it is getting harder and harder for us to, to support the city events, like Oldsmar Day, Second Friday, and Celebrate Oldsmar. So we're asking the city to help us offset those costs for the insurance and the increase in expenses. The Sheriff's Department and, you know, everything else, tents, beer, everything is increased. We do believe that this is a local municipal service contribution. Any questions?
Thank you, Mark. So this is for Oldsmar Days, Celebrate Oldsmar, $35,000.
And, and Second Friday.
This was a city-funded event years, last year or the year before.
Right.
Now the chamber is taking over, correct?
Right.
Okay. I have a couple more questions. But anybody else have any questions?
On the, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Councilwoman Gannon, go ahead.
On the back, I mean, you're, I don't know if you're looking at the same thing. On the, on the back page of the application, it kind of breaks down the cost of each event. So for Oldsmar, this is projected for this coming year?
Yeah, some of it was last year and projected this year.
So Oldsmar Days is approximately $43,000 to put on. Celebrate Oldsmar is approximately $41,000 to put on. And all the Second Fridays, I'm assuming combined is about $29,700 to put on. So the total funding request is 35. Barely covers one. Okay, so I've been kicking around this question. I'll ask you about the other things too, but... Between Oldsmar Days, so, so Celebrate Oldsmar, you know, it started out as, okay, we're, we're not going to have Fourth of July fireworks, so we move it to September. So then it kept getting rained out. So then we kind of moved it closer to end of September. And then we kind of were getting close to October. And then we have Oktoberfest right on the back of that. And I've, I've previously remarked in the past that Oldsmar Days and Celebrate Oldsmar are very similar events. I've thought in my head, okay, well, what if we take the fireworks and have them at Oldsmar Days? I was wondering if there's any feedback, any, is there any feeling from the chamber on the efficacy of, of doing something like that? Or is there a desire to keep doing all of the events? I'm...
It's, I mean, we took the Celebrate Oldsmar because the city asked us to take it over.
Right.
I don't have a problem putting the fireworks in March and doing it. Well, it's, next year will be April because of Easter.
Yeah.
But I don't have a problem putting the fireworks and, and just making it one event a year. I don't have a problem with that.
It's so hard because the, our residents love all of these events, right? But...
But, you know, 400, 400% increase in liability insurance is...
The liability insurance cost is massive.
Yes.
And then, of course, you know, approximately 10,000 persons served per event or for Second Friday, that's kind of combined. If you had to articulate it, Mark, which I know you love being put on the spot about articulating answers to questions, but what municipal purpose do you think these events serve? I know what I think they serve, but...
I mean, it serves the community. It, it brings people together. It brings the businesses together. Second Friday brought a lot of businesses, business people together. You know, we have, we have food vendors. Vendors, Oldsmar Days, Oktoberfest, you know, they're, Celebrate Oldsmar. It brings, brings the community together. So, with that.
There's a... I'll say, I'll save my comments for council discussion. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
I'm just curious as far as the, the, you know, our, the general form is, it's labeled as charitable donation requests. And then near the bottom, with the question that says, "If yes," which was for prior question of, "Have you requested funds from the city before?" Which, I don't know if that's just an error in the way it printed out because it's marked yes and no. Then it says, "The answer was not a donation, see a BAP agreement." Can you explain the, the purpose of kind of answering in that manner for that? As far as...
Well, we wanted to make, we wanted to make sure that this wasn't part of the BAP agreement. This is not, you know, BAP agreement does not part of what we do event-wise.
Because the BAP is...
Business, businesses.
It's for services.
Right.
It's for providing a service.
So I wanted to make sure that this is not part of the BAP program.
Just a donation.
Okay. Thank you.
I got just a couple of questions. Celebrate Oldsmar, let's start with that one. That used to be one day. That used to be one day, Saturday, with fireworks. I noticed fireworks aren't on here. So, that's usually around 17,000 to 20,000?
We pay for them.
The city pays for them.
The city pays for the fireworks, I just wanted to make sure. All right. So, it turned into a three-day event, which instead of a one, so that's one thing. And then, Oldsmar Days is very important, it's been around for so long with the Oldsmobile Club, is very involved with that, the Oldsmobile Parade. I just want to say one thing, I'm very appreciative that you've taken this over, because these to me are two very important events for our city community. And I'm very thankful that the Chamber, honestly, I was not really too kinged about it when you first took it over, but you guys have done an excellent job. You've done a wonderful job in taking it over, and I support both of these programs. I've attended quite a few of the Second Fridays, I don't know what your plans are with that, are you going to continue that, or...
Well, that would be depending on the, on the funding.
Okay. All right.
Mark, do you have a rough estimate as to other three events and the $35,000 ask, what amount of money would be allocated to each one?
Well, we just, we kind of booked it down, $12,500 from Oldsmar Days, same with Celebrate Oldsmar, and then $10,000 for Second Friday.
Any other questions?
I have a, you know, statement, I love these events. I happened to be here in 2014 as I was moving from Jacksonville, trying to figure out where I wanted to live in the Tampa area, and it was, one of the things we're here for Oldsmar Days that I loved about, like, this seems like a great city, I want to move here. You know, I look at this and I'd love to see comparison year over year and see what it was last year versus this year, but we're also missing, you know, there's revenue that you're collecting on the other side. You're collecting the booth rentals, you're collecting the beer, food, the beer and the other revenues there. Have you seen that increase over the years, or what's on the revenue side of this?
The revenues, it depends on, it depends, depends on whether...
Per event?
Yeah.
Not total?
Yeah. It depends on whether, I mean, all of our events are weather-driven, I mean, Celebrate Oldsmar, last year if we had better weather, could we had better attendance, better, you know, profitability, yes.
I'm not, I'm not discounting the fact that costs have gone up, and that's apparent across for everybody here. My concern is, you know, are you trying to even think about offsetting these costs with increased fees for tent rentals, beer purchases going to six, those types of things?
We're going to have to do that as well.
Right. I'm not trying to ask you how to run the Chamber.
We're going to have to do that as well, you know, just the...
Good evening, Council, James Polter, past Chair with the Chamber. Just a quick point on, in regards to Celebrate Oldsmar and Second Friday. On paper, they've both lost money over the past couple of years.
Okay.
Yeah, the...
They lost, financially, they're losing money.
It looks like on page two, part two of the 990s, that Oktoberfest, kind of...
Oktoberfest is, yeah, kind of helps offset, and obviously, Oldsmar Days has been very established. Celebrate Oldsmar has struggled with that time of year and weather, and so it's very weather-dependent driven, and the past couple of years has not been successful.
And it's also like, right before Oktoberfest, I remember last November, it was, or October, it was kind of...
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's up to the Chamber to manage, I mean, we manage that, we've managed that for years.
Yeah.
You know, the challenge has just been financially, you know, doing events is very weather-dependent, and then also the major increase of costs for sheriffs, major increase in costs of liability insurance. You know, we want to provide these recreational facilities for the residents of Oldsmar, and not just Oldsmar. Talking about, you know, the economic impact from, from the event side, bringing people like yourself who attended those events years ago, it's like, well, yeah, it's a cool place, I want to go live there. You know, there's, there's that, that dollar effect that we can't really track.
Right.
So, you know, we would hate to see these events go away, but as, as a Board of Directors who are fiscally responsible, we have to make sure that these events at least break even, and they're not losing money, so...
I think we all want the events, but I think we're all sitting here going, there's $75,000 here we don't have.
Sure. At the end of the night, it's going to be canceled. Every organization on here is fantastic and hopefully gets some funding from tonight. I know that you guys have a really tricky job to decide, you know, how this all works, along with balancing a $50 million budget. You know, that's a, it's a small portion of that, and we're taking up a lot of the time, but it's important that we work through the reasons why we're all here. So, kudos to everybody up there.
Celebrate Oldsmar last year was the weekend before Thanksgiving, it put them on stake, right?
Yeah.
So, it was Oktoberfest, then Celebrate Oldsmar, then Thanksgiving, then, it was immediate.
And there's been some discussion to reduce the number of days of Celebrate Oldsmar, to help control the cost, but still have the event. And then obviously, in regards to Second Friday, we had started Second Friday in the hopes of continuing the momentum for downtown and growing downtown, obviously, a slight change of direction, you know, with that and the current status of the economy and, you know, unsure of development, so, you know, Second Friday is obviously something that is, is being evaluated, or has been evaluated within board level as well, for full transparency.
Do you think the 400% increase in liability insurance is going to be a factor year over year, or do you think it will subside after a period of years, or is there just no way to know right now?
I think we're in an insurance crisis in general.
Yes.
We're in the state of Florida, right? All the litigation...
Right.
From liability is, you know, all the claims are coming out of Florida, so, you know, it's, I don't think that's going to change.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mark. Thank you very much. All right, we're done, right? All right, so, so...
Actually, no.
I want to say something, thank you to each applicant for taking your time to share your request and your stories about each of your organizations. I think it was very important that you did share your stories to the council. As you all know, we only budgeted $75,000 for this line item. This certainly will be a tough decision for the entire city council up here. I understand the city clerk may have some options, would you like to come up and share those with us for the council so we can decide where to move next?
Yes. Last year, I understand that the council allocated amounts to each request one at a time, in no particular order. Due to the large amount of requests received this year, another approach may be to prioritize the funding request and then allocate desired funding. You could prioritize the funding request by assigning a value from one to five, five being the highest priority, to each request. City staff would average each assigned value to produce a list of the requests in priority order. You then could decide how much to allocate, starting with the highest priority. If this is the way council would like to proceed, then staff is prepared to facilitate. If not, we still have a spreadsheet so that you can see the allocations in real time and how it impacts a $75,000 budget for this line item.
Thank you, Kristin. Council, there's two options that we have. Do you have any other way you would like to address this or consider? If not, what do you think Vice Mayor?
I'm fine with either option, really. It's obviously probably quicker to just go through and try to nail things down, item by item, or line by line, but if it is the pleasure of everyone else to do some sort of waiting or prioritization, I'm open to that as well.
Councilmember Graber?
Either way is fine, as well for me. I did have one question for Felicia. So, we budgeted the $75,000, is there any wiggle room in the budget to increase? And so maybe we'd be able to give out some money we weren't expecting to be able to give out.
Can I donate my travel budget?
But just in general. I mean, if we, if we raised it, say, and this is for everybody, but is this an idea that I had where we were at, $75,000, but we had so many applications and for worthy causes, and so it's going to be difficult regardless, could we have a little bit more breathing room? But I don't know where that money would come from in other parts of the budget, but whatever recommendation Felicia may have regarding that.
You know, ultimately, the council makes that decision. Having said that, you know, it's very important for us to have a balanced budget. So, any of that wiggle room, I would suggest if you wanted to add a little more, that's probably okay, but I wouldn't add too much more, because it only has to come, the only place that I have that it could come from right now is, is really our contingency fund, which is really there for, for, for our own unknowns. So, you know, if you wanted to go a little bit over, then that would probably be okay, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't suggest that you go a lot over.
Gotcha. I mean, in my opinion, in my own head, my cap was $90,000, so a $15,000 increase, not that we have to get to the 90, but that, we couldn't go, we couldn't go over the 90. But that was just me thinking about it in my head where it's, hey, I want to help everybody, we're not going to be able to in total, that's just the fact of the matter, but do we have the wherewithal to facilitate a little bit more money?
Councilmember Buckman?
Is it possible to go back, is it two slides or three slides to the other cost on the council for a brief moment?
Jordan knows she put the whole slide sheet together.
One slide, one slide, there we go. So, I, as we're looking through this, the second to last item, $2,000 for email, I think everybody's been through email.
Well, the ones that are available, because there's Leadership Academy one and two that is currently tabled until further notice.
Coming up, yep.
And we are making a, not to be weird, but this is a budgetary consideration over the course of '23, '24, which, there's an election, so...
It might be new people, right?
It's...
True.
It's kind of a weird thing, but I see where you're headed, and you can have my trip, you can have my $1,500 travel budget, I'll pay for my...
I wasn't asking for your travel budget, I was just, I saw the email, I'm like...
I already gave you some, Felicia. I mean, you're right. Councilmember Buckman, I was thinking about this slide as we were talking, because some of these requests are within some of these dues amounts, and I don't know. You guys might have more insight, Mayor, you might have more insight on some of these dues amounts.
All those dues are all increased this year.
Sure.
As of...
It was just a place to potentially pull some money, so...
Like, where does, what, I'm thinking of that municipal purpose, right? So...
Well, the, let's go back to the question hand, which was the two options, and I'm sorry, I didn't mean to derail us from that. I'm open to either option as well.
Okay.
But I was just trying to see what other monies we could potentially pull from, so I did rail this for a moment, but I...
Councilmember Gannon?
I, I guess I would be in favor of doing some kind of weighted approach, the prioritized list. I think it could help. You know, when we were, we were provided all of these applications in advance, and of course, I went through this mental exercise on my own, and now, everything is upside down and changed. So, I would be in favor of doing the, the weighted approach. And then if we have additional organizations that we want to consider going beyond the $75,000, like last year, we went up to $77,500, because we, I think we threw in the cellular budget and a couple other things.
Yeah.
To, to find the additional funding without taking it from contingency, then I think that would make the most sense to me.
Right, and we took away the wifi on our...
We took away cellular data.
Now we got phones.
And now we got phones. We have phones for the...
All right, so, Kristin, I, I actually like the, the idea of the, the five or the one, what do we like best? And I do actually like Councilmember Graber's suggestion, because the presentations that we had today were very impressive. There's a need out there, so I do believe we could maybe do a little of increase, but not a lot of increase. But I kind of agree with Councilmember Graber on that, doing some type of increase. And I would like to do the spreadsheet, where you have the rate on five to one, because as Councilmember Gannon said, in a lot of her questions, where are you in Oldsmar? Are the funds going into Oldsmar? And I think that's really important. Where we stand today with our economy, with our city employees, with our fire department, and where we're headed in the future, and especially, Mark Howe just said, with the Chamber, the insurance rates, that's a, that's a huge problem, not only here, but in Pinellas County. So, that's my take on it, so, help us out, what should we do?
Okay, so if you would like to go with that option...
Can I just maybe do a little exercise real quick? So, for those that submitted an application that got an, that is requesting an increase and received funding in a prior year, could you put your hands up real quick?
Oh, for increase over...
For an increase, yeah, yes.
Move forward one slide.
Just those that asked for an increase. All right, for those that have their hands up, keep them up. If we were to not make any sort of increase or adjustment, leave your hands up if it would be extremely painful for your operation. Okay.
I think it would be extremely painful for...
All right, just, just curious.
And I was leaning towards kind of the same thing, where it's, let's leave everything as it was last year and then see, okay, is...
What we had, what we got.
Can we get some extra here, there, or there, or not?
I mean, I, I know it's, you know, it's describe the level of pain, right? It's, it's obviously costs are going up across the board, and that's, as, as Felicia pointed out in the budget, so, you know, just, just wanted to throw that out there, so...
You mean, like, leaving everything as the fiscal 2022, '23, but then somehow accounting for the Chamber's request of 35?
So, I think what he's saying is keep it the same.
I just, I just want to have that, because I don't know where we're going to go with once we do this prioritization, is...
Go to 8250.
Okay, say whatever entity is the highest prioritized, do we just...
The same.
Say, all right, whatever the request is, even if it's an increase over last year or not? Just, it's another wrinkle to the dynamic.
But, and so my whole point was, and Mayor was the same, keep it the same, but we have, like Tampa Bay 211 isn't here, the Empire isn't here, the Maroni Dinner isn't here.
There's 3750 on there that's not accounted for.
Right, so, that would lessen it a little bit, but my whole point is, okay, we were able to weather that amount of money last year. Do we want to try to get creative with, like, the emo thing, okay, it's $2,000, it sounds like it would be 500 times four for four council members, if it's only a potential of two, there's a thousand bucks, right? And so, do we try to do that to say, okay, we'll go a little bit north of the 75, we'll try to pull it from different places, and therefore, we can perhaps get more money to people? Or do we try to keep it, but then we still have to have a discussion about the special events?
So, do we want to rank, or...
I think we should rank them first to see where everybody's priorities are at. I hope it shakes out like that.
We're going to rank them.
Okay. Take the spreadsheets.
Okay, staff will go ahead and pass out a spreadsheet to you now, and you can go ahead and start filling that out.
Okay.
And that is again, one to five, with five being the highest priority.
So, I can have a bunch of fives, right? You don't have to give...
There's, there's not a forced curve, is there?
There's not, there's no forced curve.
Only get one five.
Ah, Jesus.
At least didn't get this beforehand to put our presentation in.
Right?
I understand, but this is the first I have heard that we were incomplete. So, I need to know what was incomplete and what we were meeting. Because it was three seconds, and she stepped down now, we're taking that. I thought that was in January, so... Okay, she has four in January, that's when I, I remember, and she was...
Sorry, I'm laughing at your sigh right now.
It's going away quick.
Huh? What? I said, I'm laughing at your sigh right now. Don't, just don't?
Don't?
Nope.
I can say meme about anything Andrew wins.
No pressure, we're talking to each other.
Where do we turn in our test?
You're already done?
Did you Christmas tree it?
Do we give them to you? Oh, no, we read them?
We've got the sheet.
We're going to read them. Great.
Now we're after.
After, let's hand these in, all right? We're going to call a break.
Andrew, Andrew?
Yeah, just go, just go.
I don't know if we're allowed to...
Felicia, while we're doing this, can I call a break?
A brief recess for council members? In other words, do we need to call a brief recess for council members to be able to leave the room and go to the restroom? Or can we just leave and come back?
Yeah, I, I think you should call a recess for, for a very quick...
Fifteen-minute recess, five-minute, five-minute recess. All right, thank you.
Yes.
Motion?
Got a motion? Call in favor, aye? We need recessed. I did, I did, I already hit it. I'm trying to do this.
Still busy, doing well?
When did you get all these packets emailed to you, when?
I don't remember if I did.
I never got them. Did you ever get them?
I don't know. I don't think I did.
I did, I put a mouse, and I totaled it, yes.
Yes, sir. We're not doing March. That's right. I want to say that too. They just put that thing and just... It doesn't need to pick it up. Well done.
Are you doing math again?
No.
Okay, the man with the gavel can make everybody sit down, that's all right.
All right, let's get back on it, I need a motion to start the meeting up.
Motion to resume the meeting there.
Second?
Second.
Well, favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, does everyone have their rating, rate application completed?
Yeah.
Felicia, what do you want to do, hand them over?
Read them, read them.
Could you just read those scores out loud in, uh, opposite order? We're going to have staff over here tally up your scores.
Okay.
And present the average to you when that's all done.
Who wants to go first?
Leading off? Say we start in the center.
I'll go first. Catholic Charities, four. But I changed my amounts. Am I allowed to do that, or no?
You've been rating off.
No.
Prioritization only.
Yeah, this is, this is just to rank.
Just to rank.
Or to give a priority schedule.
All right, so then, Clearwater Youth, I gave them a four. Keep Pinellas Beautiful, I gave them a one. Maddie Williams, I gave them a three. Neighborhood Care Meal on Wheels, I gave them a four. Oldsmar Cares, I gave them a five. Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, I gave them a four. Oldsmar Neighborhood Association, I gave them a five. Pinellas County Sheriff's Office, Pinellas Safe Harbor, a four. Upper Tampa Bay Chamber of Commerce Education Foundation, four. The Holiday Sharing Fund, four. And the Chamber of Commerce Special Events, a five.
I'll go next.
Vice Mayor?
I tried to, um, use a little bit of a hybrid approach between looking at, if anybody's familiar with Maslow's hierarchy of needs, in terms of what the, uh, what the service is providing, and then, uh...
These are mighty, no vice mayor.
A multiplier of impact to Oldsmar, so... Catholic Charities, four. Clearwater for Youth, two. Keep Pinellas Beautiful, two. Maddie Williams, five. Meals on Wheels, four. Oldsmar Cares, five. Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, four. ONA, three. Safe Harbor, four. Education Foundation, three. Holiday Sharing Fund, three. Special Events, two.
Councilman Gannon, you want to go next?
Sure. Um, Catholic Charities, one. Clearwater for Youth, three. Keep Pinellas Beautiful, one. Maddie Williams, five. Neighborly Care Network, four. Oldsmar Cares, five. Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, four. ONA, four. Sheriff's Office, three. Education Foundation, four. Holiday Sharing Fund, four. Tampa Bay Chamber Special Events Support, five.
Councilor Graver?
Catholic Charities, two. CFY, two. Keep Pinellas Beautiful, two. Maddie Williams, five. Neighborly Care Network, three. Oldsmar Cares, five. Friends of the Arts, five. ONA, three. Pinellas Safe Harbor, three. Education, four. Kids Pedal Power, five. Special Events Support, five.
Councilor Buckman?
Catholic Charities, two. CFY, three. Keep Pinellas Beautiful, one. Maddie Williams, five. Neighborly Care, three. Oldsmar Cares, five. Friends of the Arts, four. ONA, four. Pinellas County, three. Upper Tampa Bay Chamber Education, three. Holiday Sharing Fund, three. And Special Events Support, four.
Okay, staff is working on that, and then they will bring over the laptop in just a moment.
See, this is useful. This is interesting to me.
If you guys would like to start allocating, um, a request, Jennifer can start inputting the numbers.
Okay. So, if we leave everything as it is, it's seventy-six thousand, five hundred, oh, that's last year's budget.
That's last year.
Yeah, we'd need to punch in the numbers, the, the way that I had suggested, and of course, always up for discussion, put in the numbers from last year in this year's column, and then see if we can move up or down or around. But completely up to the pleasure of the council, but that was what I was suggesting.
So, I mean, based on this, um, it seems that the council has placed a priority, um, of the one, two, three, four, fourth from the top of allocating funds to special event support. So, that means there's going to be some kind of allocation there, which will have to come from somewhere else. So, we could put last year's amounts and then adjust up or down, I suppose, unless somebody's going to be, if somebody's going to be adjusted to zero, um...
I'd like to ask a question of the city manager, if we could. We had a discussion last week as it relates to special event request, and the concept of potentially considering that for being budgeted elsewhere, if it is the desire of the council, as well as with staff to have value, as clearly we've ranked it, or averaged ranked it relatively high. Is there any opportunity to move that elsewhere? I know it's still, money's got to come from somewhere to pay for something else, but, um, if you wanted to share any thoughts on the potential for consideration of that being not a charitable donation, but something that we budget for because of the value that we hold for events?
Yeah, so, so this time, each of the charitable donations that you approve will come forward with a contract. So, it, it will have a, an agreement for services, or an agreement as to what the expenditure of fund is for your allocated money, so it has the same net effect. So, so, you know, whether or not it's placed in another budget, it's still going to have the same, same effect. So, it, it, you know, it doesn't really matter.
Okay, very good.
So, if you wanted to increase this budget to accommodate that, then, then that would suffice.
Understood.
Is the easiest thing for us to do, then, just to give all of our monetary amounts and average it for each one, then, or...
Um, I, I, I'm not sure what the, the easiest way is, however you all want to proceed. Um, I, I, I'm not sure what the, the easiest way is however you all want to proceed. But you may, may want to start plugging in numbers, and then seeing, the spreadsheet will work to where you will see, you'll see the, kind of the net effect of that. So as you start spending money, it'll start taking it off the bottom, so you, you know how much is left of the allocation. And that is at seventy-five grand, so if you wish to go a little higher, then we can, um, Jennifer can change that number in about a second.
So can we see, can we see all of the
Prior years.
Prior years' expenses with whatever the, the ones that did not, that were not incurred last year, all the new ones?
So.
Where does that put us?
You just want to see FY twenty-two, twenty-three copied into.
That plus the new ones.
Seventy-five hundred, yep, the new ones.
And they want to add the thirty-five thousand for
Thirty-five thousand, seventy-five hundred.
Special event, so that's row six. And then for the, um, CFY, seventy-five hundred.
It'll put us at the
Hundred, not thousand.
Oh, off by a factor of ten. That is a big hole to get out of.
Play it in the Super Bowl.
And the budget just went to sixty.
Go Panthers.
Alright, so there's your deficit.
Forty-four thousand.
I mean, I went through this at home, and I, you know, reduced or increased amounts. I don't, I don't know what, what you guys did. So, for example, because to me, Keep Pinellas Beautiful, while an incredible organization with a laudable purpose, I, I moved that to zero because I wanted to allocate that money elsewhere. I, I don't, you know, this is incredibly difficult, but this is the reality of, of what we have. Oldsmar Cares, I wanted to meet a slight increase. I know that's the wrong direction, but I put down thirty thousand five hundred dollars. Maddie Williams, I put down eighteen thousand. Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, I put at four. You know, like, we have to start talking, so nobody wants to say any uncomfortable things, but.
You know, look, it's a hard decision to make. These are all great organizations. They all do great things for the community. No one's discounting that, and that's probably gonna be said more than once tonight, right? Staff has done a great job at trying to be very fiscally conservative in all of this. I think we're trying to do our best here, but I think there's other areas where, you know, would the rest of the council be willing to entertain a moratorium on travel for one year? So we can help other organizations during this timeframe, right? I mean, that's
I would be in favor of that. I think that's a great idea.
That's one area where we can kind of sacrifice what we're doing up here, and, and there's a lot of opportunity for virtual learning and things like that. And, and I'm not discounting being in person at events where we can, uh, highlight our city and have a representation there. I'm not discounting that. But these are hard times for a lot of people. We have an opportunity here. And, and I, I would like to see if we could raise this budget a little bit more by offsetting something else.
Now, we don't have the slide at our disposal anymore of the other, the breakdown of the other expenses.
Yeah, I mean, it's
You know, it's round about a thousand here, or five hundred there, per person.
About five thousand dollars, it'll go up to eighty?
No, it's
You have eight thousand dollars budgeted in your travel budget.
For travel.
Eight thousand.
Yeah, so for travel, and then education and training, the total was twelve grand?
Yes.
So, I mean
You can have mine, yes.
You can have mine. I mean, we've had this discussion before.
Make the motion, Jared.
So you won't go to the Florida League of Cities to travel anymore?
No, I go to them, but they reimburse me, remember?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Yeah, so I can still go.
You're on, you're on that council, you're on the
Yeah, I'm on that board. But that's, I mean, but in terms of the city paying for it, I haven't asked for that, I've never made that ask. I go to those events on my own dime, and they pay me back.
Okay.
I mean, even the, even the travel that I do for, you know, we're defining civic purpose, but, you know, the meetings at Ford Pinellas, and all the meetings I've got with WIT, the things that we're doing on, on other boards that we serve on, I don't even ask for reimbursement on that, it's such minute amounts.
Is there
So that's fifteen hundred per council member, and two thousand for the mayor, is that the breakdown? Okay.
Yeah, that's the aggregate.
Yes.
Fifteen hundred times four, and then the mayor gets two, right?
Okay, so raise your hand if you're okay with it can, with the moratorium on travel, or taking the eight thousand and putting it toward this.
I'm not good with it.
Okay, so it's
So, reduce it to two.
Reduce it to two thousand, and put the rest in.
Give us, put us up to eighty-one.
So then our starting total changes to eighty-one.
Mm-hmm.
Still got a long way to go.
No, it, it, it's gonna have to come from both ends. We gotta find money on the front end, finding money on the back end, and
What's the, um, breakdown on education again? Please.
That's two grand, right? Or four?
You got four thousand dollars of education.
Thousand, that's not a thousand, or?
Yes.
Kristen has?
The fifteen hundred for the FLC Conference, that would cover three people total. And then that was the two thousand for EMO we talked about, that was basically for council members. And then the SLC Legislative Delegation was a five hundred line item, five hundred dollar line item.
Okay, so you said EMO was two thousand budgeted?
Yes.
And like you said, that one is
I mean
Maybe needed next year.
Well, it just depends, I hope.
There may be the opportunity.
I personally hope not, but here we are, so.
If we could pause for one moment, um, going back to the travel, look, if we take a moratorium for one year, next year, we're gonna be in the same situation, doing the same exact exercise again.
Yeah, no, I know.
Probably not gonna be an appetite for giving up travel again, right? I'm just, I, I want to throw that out there, not only to us, but also, you know, we're taking sacrifices up here to make sure charitable needs are met.
Yeah.
I want to make sure that's understood, so next year, we're not coming back and going, oh, the council's gonna get pulled from somewhere else. We're not, we gotta go back to education and training, I just Just what? I can't finish my thought. Gotcha. I'm having a hard time with it.
Who's going to EMO?
Not me.
I mean, we've all been to two.
Nothing available right now, until they, until otherwise determined by, um, the league, if they're gonna offer what used to be three and four, they changed to Leadership Academy. And then, um, what's his name? Dudley?
Scott Dudley?
Yeah, he, he, he taught Leadership Academy, right? And so he's retiring, so they're like in limbo of, will we continue this or not? And that's been the case since I finished EMO two, which was a year and a half or two years ago.
So that's two thousand, right? And then the FLC Conference, we budgeted fifteen hundred dollars for that, for three of us to go. But then we would only, we could, that would be another thousand, if the mayor would still want to go. But if we're all not traveling
Andrew and I know who's going, so there's money left.
This year.
For next year.
Next year. And it's in South Florida next year, probably.
Which is pricey down there.
So, I
So that would be another three thousand, if I do carry it up math.
Yep.
Look at me. I usually say Andrew math.
I mean, that's, I mean, we, I think we've maybe exhausted that side of the equation. You know, let's start distributing and see where we get with the distribution, um, and see how far off we are, and then see if, that be okay with everybody? Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I think one of the main questions I would like, and we should probably just start there, because Oldsmar Days and Nights, Celebrate Oldsmar, second Fridays. When I asked Mark the allocation, it was twelve-five, twelve-five, ten thousand. So if we decide to discontinue second Friday
That's ten.
That's ten. With the, with the least
Celebrate Oldsmar went to one day.
I don't know what that allocation would be. We lose Sunday.
So maybe it goes down to ten.
It used to be just one day, it used to be just Saturday.
Well, then, if, you know, it begs the question, then why don't we, like, why are we still doing those two events? Celebrate Oldsmar and Oldsmar Days and Nights, you know what I mean?
Part of our history, I guess?
I mean
Not as historical as Oldsmar.
Oldsmar Days and Nights, to me, is more historical than Celebrate Oldsmar.
Celebrate Oldsmar was based on a rainout.
Yeah.
I mean, to put it bluntly.
It's also, it's not, we're not etching anything in stone for future events.
No.
But right now, we, we're, everybody's
For this year, are we willing to give up second Friday for one year?
Everyone's on financial straits.
I mean, what do you guys think about that, giving up?
Celebrate Oldsmar, or you said second Friday?
I said, what about giving up second Friday for a year?
I, that's fine with me.
So then that
I'm okay with that.
Would there be a tolerance to join Oktoberfest at the same time? Could you combine the events? I, I mean, I'd be good at giving up one day.
So change that to twenty-five thousand, and then
That is negative twenty-eight thousand.
Which is a positive.
Did you say you wanted to remove the five hundred for Keep Pinellas Beautiful?
I, in my allocation, because I was focused on the municipal purpose, I had put Keep Pinellas Beautiful at zero. I had reduced Catholic Charities to five hundred. I had put Clearwater, um, for Youth down to a thousand, just because, you know, kind of focusing, making that radius of expenditure very, very small around the city, because that's all we have to give. It's not, it has nothing to do with the merits of these organizations, it just doesn't.
Can I ask a question on the Neighborly Care Network, and just going back to the presentation, just real quick? There, you, you need the ten-five-fifty-two for the matching grant. If you don't get that, you don't get the match, correct?
They have to raise a certain amount in order to get the matching grant.
Okay, thank you.
They gotta raise one million, or what it was it, ten per, they're asking for ten percent of the ten percent that they need to raise for a match.
Katie, do you want to put in what your proposed revisions are, so we can see what that gets us?
Yeah.
I had
Zero, right?
That at a zero.
Five hundred?
Uh-huh, five hundred.
Thousand?
That at a thousand.
That's all you shared.
I had I had changed, hang on, something else.
You went up on Oldsmar Cares, though, right?
What'd you have for Clearwater for Youth?
Oldsmar
We already got that, should've knocked it down.
Oldsmar Neighborhood Association, um
Oh, a thousand.
I had put at a thousand.
Didn't you say something about Maddie?
Neighbor, what did I call it? Cause on here, it was, it was, it was, it was priority based on the one I did at home, but here it's like, it was alphabetical when we were going through it, so now I'm all messed up, um.
What about going down on Safe Harbor as well?
Safe Harbor, um
Cause it's like, as it was presented, it's like, there, the expenses for that operation is budgeted by the sheriff's office, and then they request the cities to help offset that.
I had that down to five hundred dollars instead of
That seems low, how about a thousand?
Well, it's
Still short.
You're still, you're gonna be short no matter what, so at some point
And Mayor, to Andrew's point, it was presented where the sheriff's office budgets for that program, but then they look for outside donations, but the money's in that budget, that's what the understanding was, right?
I mean, on, on the surface without looking into
Yeah, for sure.
Their budget.
Yeah.
Put five hundred there.
Sure.
Let's see, we're still fifteen-five.
Getting a headache.
You want to take the Life Holiday Sharing Fund down?
The
I was about to say a formula-based equation, where everybody above four got seventy-five percent of the ask, and see how that plays out. I just don't
I mean, I'd probably bring it under, if you do it by that much, well, I don't know, based on their current ask scale.
Then it becomes nonsensical.
I mean, if you, well, if you, yeah, if you take seventy-five percent of a hundred fifty thousand, you don't get there. You gotta take half of that away to get all back to the original seventy-five.
Take seventy-five percent of the largest chunk of the top four.
Catholic Charities, I had it zero, I put it at zero.
Yeah.
I just
Well, if you take, if we take ninety as a benchmark, then it's sixty-five hundred. You guys see that? Find another nine thousand.
The first four, you're saying?
Huh?
You said ninety percent of what, of
Oh, this is not
Ninety thousand, he's saying, if, like you mentioned, ninety thousand dollars, taking it from seventy-five to ninety thousand.
What are you thinking, Felicia?
Yeah, so, um, to answer, um, Councilmember Graver's, um, statement, is that, you know, that would have been a gap between seventy-five and ninety, so that would be a net fifteen thousand. If you wanted to take an additional fifteen thousand out of contingency.
Right. Just mark's there.
No.
James is
That takes us to ninety-six.
Contingency, right now
No, it just, is it, is it prohibitive? If the, the give was twenty thousand, that'd make those events impossible, or much more difficult?
Um, no, I don't think so. I mean, I think we would still, we're still gonna do Celebrate Oldsmar this year. We're working on promoting it, obviously. Oldsmar Days is a very well-established, successful event. I think it, it would have to, we've already committed to this year, but if adjusted, we might revisit Celebrate Oldsmar next year for, cause we had to start planning
But it was part of this current fiscal year, right?
Part of, right, we've already budgeted for it, for, right, for, and we've made commitments to celebrate, to celebrate Oldsmar, but if it's adjusted, we might
You'd have to rethink it for next year.
As we're planning, is that correct?
Okay. Just something to put in our brains.
And I don't think, I don't want to speak out of class, but I don't think we're opposed to the idea of maybe moving with our approach to March weather feather. It's well-established, so maybe we get through this year and see how it goes.
So if we either kept it at twenty-five, as far as the event goes, or twenty, then that leaves us with potentially needing to move from contingency reserve, either ten-five, or fifteen-five. Correct?
No.
Twenty, okay. Okay.
You can just promise us good weather.
Don't, don't let Chip organize it.
Can we change to twenty-five to twenty? Okay, so ninety-one thousand five on the total.
Felicia, you okay with ninety-one-five?
I think we should
That's ten thousand left in the contingency reserve, if it, if that's the way it stands right now.
It's, it's really, um, your decision.
What?
It's really your decision, I mean
It's our decision, you guys, so if there's
We'd be taking sixteen thousand five hundred dollars from the contingency reserve, correct?
No, ten-five, right.
It would be
If, based on the adjustments of what we discussed earlier on the expenditure side.
We're still doing what we said we wouldn't do last year, right? So we set the bar at seventy-five thousand last year, and we're at ninety-one-five.
But on, on, yes, but at the same time, through all the efforts with everybody, we've kept millage at the same rate.
Yeah.
We see, and that's We see, I'm not saying open up the bank, but I'm saying, you know, look, we, we've, we've done smart things fiscally that.
Yeah.
Maybe we can afford to do some more.
Well, unless, just, I mean, this current fiscal, we were at eighty, right, and we're currently at seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven-five.
So, I mean, I don't, I don't know if we, I, I can't remember last year if we started at seventy-five and wound up at eighty. Does that ring a bell, or?
Last year.
You started at seventy-five, and then at the budget work session, you.
Found up any.
You found money the same way through cell service, and then you had an additional request come in.
Yeah.
Remember, for the survey work throughout Pinellas County, so that was like an addition outside of the budget cycle.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No.
Anything else?
I don't know if there's a, any appetite for further adjustments, doesn't sound like.
If nobody wants to make further adjustments, then we have to take it from reserves.
Mm-hmm.
So. I, I, I would make further adjustments, but if that's not the consensus.
Where would you think, where you would make further adjustments?
I don't want to do any further adjustments, but I would take, I would take five hundred dollars from every one of them.
That would cut your deficit in half.
Like, worst-case scenario, there's some late October hurricane, you guys, our contingency is what keeps a city providing services.
Correct.
And I, I, I love that, that we have this small bit of money to, to provide to local organizations, and that's a fantastic and laudable cause, but our, our purpose is to make sure that our city can provide services, the most basic services to our residents.
Alright, so anything that is over, over five thousand dollars, or five thousand, should we take five hundred dollars off?
I think it's a good thing to do.
I don't, I don't want to suffer the other ones anymore.
I mean.
Still gonna leave you short.
This is not fun.
No, it's not, it's not at all, but. The taxpayers' dollars are not for us to give away, right?
I know, exactly.
Has to serve a municipal purpose.
Eighty-five hundred bucks still. Eight thousand.
I wish we had whole budget, I wish we. This is not fun at all, this, we should probably do this as a separate.
Work session.
Work session, next time.
That's what Safety Harbor does. That's what Safety Harbor does.
Devote more time.
Mm-hmm.
I feel a little bit better about that number.
That's down to almost one percent of your contingencies.
Right where Steve Graeber said ninety thousand.
Thoughts?
So, I just. The special events.
Not happy with it?
Well, the ask was thirty-five grand, they came down to twenty, and then.
So put it back at twenty.
And I just.
Let's make small adjustments until we're, we have consensus, that's what we have to do.
I hear you.
And, and just for, for a note too, this, this budget number didn't include any of the reduction from EMO. So, I'm not sure if you all made a final decision about.
Oh yeah, we didn't add that as a.
The EMO expense.
I thought that was in there already.
Nope, they only made the adjustment for travel.
He was three thousand? Thought EMO was two.
Uh, EMO was in total.
Two. EMO was two.
Two.
Two thousand.
Annual conference was fifteen hundred, and then legislative action days was five hundred, right, or legislative conference.
And we, we hadn't added all that in?
No, we did not add that, we only added the travel.
Only added the six thousand from travel, out of the eight that was originally there.
Well, if EMO's in limbo, then I think we can make that call pretty.
Put it in there.
Counsel, excuse me, counsel, I, sorry I haven't spoken up yet or anything, but if it'll help you out with this on the event side, why don't you take us down to fifteen? I can find support from other local businesses that we're involved in as well to cover another five of that, and we can still keep the free admission and everything else with that, so if that helps bring you down to a more manageable number, we're willing to do that.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifty thousand.
They're doing the desk with.
Left with zero.
I can live with that.
Thank you.
I can live with that.
Cause I feel like that, now that, like, this was awful, y'all.
Well, now you're, uh.
This was awful, this is really hard.
Back to only being forty, almost forty-five hundred dollars as an increase compared to the last, this current fiscal year.
Does that work, Felicia?
Yes, that works.
Yeah.
Alright.
Does it work, guys?
Do we have a consensus, we're gonna stick with that? Eighty-four-five.
Four thousand two hundred fifty dollar increase in total.
Alright, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody who came, thank you, everyone for your presentation.
Keep in mind, that this is your city program with Oldsmar Friends of the Arts, that minimal amount, remember you get thirty-seven hundred back from my programs, from you running that program with the city, so you're really not giving us six thousand, you're giving us a couple thousand, and fifty-five hundred will probably shut us down. So please keep that in mind, thank you.
Okay.
Why don't we, go ahead, Krista.
So that concludes that item, unless you have any more discussion?
No.
No more discussion, we're done, thank you.
Okay, so.
Very painful.
Mayor, I'd make a motion for a fifteen-minute recess.
Okay. Alright, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
No motions at a work session, but we'll, we'll break for fifteen, right?
I thought that's what you just, you just told us we had to make a motion.
I don't think so, I think there's no, we're breaking for fifteen.
I didn't think there was at a work session, but, it's alright.
Well, I guess you break a motion for the, it's nine o'clock.
No, just no, no voting.
No voting, right.
I don't.
No, I think it's okay to break, I think, Steve, I think it's okay to have a motion to break.
For recess, you just can't motion to vote.
Go get yourself some Cheetos, sir.
I hope your application is correct.
What do you guys? All right, let's get started.
All right, good evening.
Thank you.
So, the next federal fund department is the city manager.
That's here.
The page number, like, sixty-one. Is it working? City manager. This is the switcheroo.
There we go.
All right.
Thanks, Garrett. So, city manager department. The city manager ensures effective delivery of municipal services and programs while supporting the council's vision, mission, and strategic priorities. It's important to note that this budget also contains the human resources elements. So, you're going to see this throughout the presentation, but you'll see that the city managers department, and these are the goals for the upcoming year, support the following strategic goals for the council. So, one of the goals was quality of place. So, you know, I ensure the fair and equitable administration of laws, ordinances, and policies in accordance with state guidelines. Provide leadership in evaluating services and alternate delivery systems. Prepare and administer the budget, capital programs. Serve as incident commander for emergency operations. Coordinate with intergovernmental and private interests and implement strategic plans and incorporate technology and innovation. I think it's important to pause just for a moment about the emergency operations because emergency operations is a very large investment of city time, but you're not going to see it in the budget because it actually doesn't have any budgeted expenses for it. So, we spend a large amount of our time making sure that we're trained and ready to act in times of emergency. So, I think that's important to point out. Public relations, you know, to continue implementing the community engagement policy, conducting the new annual online survey, and then continue the implementation of the city's new branding. So, sustainability, of course, to maintain responsible fiscal management practices within Oldsmar. So, what are some of the highlights of this department? There was a change in position, which we've already talked about, the reclassification of the assistant city manager to an assistant to the city manager to realize cost savings. We have an intern program for $20,000 so that we can have interns all throughout the whole city, but the budgeted amount is in the city manager budget. We're going to continue to use our ClearPoint strategy software to help us with strategic initiatives and priorities. You see that on the monthly reports. It also gives us transparency to the public because it's an interface directly to our website. There's $100,000 for the Garing Group and for Bintec, and that's to manage and administer our benefits program. So, you can see the new fiscal year budget is actually a decrease, and mainly that's due to the salaries. So, I'd like Michelle Kutch to come up and talk a little bit about the Human Resources Service Program.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. Michelle Kutch, Human Resources Director. Okay, so, human resources. We manage the employee benefits, compensation, training, records, recruitment, employee engagement programs, wellness programs, and we support employee relations. And here's a couple of pictures from our Mobley Bayou beach cleanup, which occurred in July. That was the sustainability team put that on. Goals and objectives. So, this is where I'm going to spend a little bit more time today, this particular slide. As mentioned earlier, our most valuable asset here at the city is our employees. So, in HR, we invest in the overall employee experience. We offer tools and support to which, in return, will help our workforce thrive both professionally and personally. So, we want to continue to implement the recommendations from the Compensation, Classification, and Benefits Study, which, as you know, we did a number of increases to employee salaries to stay competitive. That's going to aid in our recruitment and retention. And in the current, coming fiscal year, we plan to implement some of the other suggestions from that study. They were mentioned a little bit earlier, but we're going to provide long-term disability to all of our employees effective October 1st. We're going to also include Veterans Day as a city-observed holiday, and we'll provide standby compensations for supervisors in certain divisions. The second bullet is we're going to continue to offer career development programs, recognition programs, and a comprehensive whole health wellness program. That includes emotional well-being, work-life balance initiatives through education, training, events, and activities. I'm going to highlight a lot of the events and activities and different trainings that we've put on in the past 12 months, a lot of them which we'll continue to do next fiscal year as well. So, for employee professional development, we just concluded a leadership training series. It was eight classes in all, and it was to help train the up-and-coming Oldsmar leaders. So, that went from April through July, and topics included emotional intelligence, holding crucial conversations, personal accountability, time management. It was so well-received, and there were so many employees that wanted to take it and didn't get an opportunity to, that we are going to hold another session starting in the winter. We also, actually coming out of that, we received some feedback that a lot of the field staff is in need of some basic computer training courses. So, we're trying to put together something for next year just to get some basics in place, like the Microsoft Office Suite stuff, you know, Word, Excel, things like that. They don't have that opportunity. You know, they're out in the field all day, and they're not sitting at a computer, so that will give them the necessary skills to help career advancement. For employee well-being, we take a whole health approach. We address it from many angles. So, the first one is our employee assistance program, which I'm sure a lot of people have EAP at their organizations. We offer free and confidential counseling services to assist with personal difficulties or life challenges. EAP also does live webinars twice a month for us, which focuses on a array of wellness topics, emotional support for caregivers, workplace conflict strategies, boosting your brain health, and pertinent to today's meeting, it's my budget and I'm sticking to it. Our local BayCare also partners with us. They give us live monthly webinars from physicians on different topics such as gut health, colon cancer, OMI eking back, and other medical topics from physicians in the local community. Both of these vendors record their webinars so that our employees can watch them back at a later time, or they can always visit them if the topic becomes pertinent. We also support, I'm sorry, we do financial wellness. We're in the middle of an in-person financial wellness series for the employees. Our presenter is a certified financial planner from Raymond James, and the topics include planning for retirement, estate planning, budgeting and saving, understanding investments, and the feedback so far in this series has been overwhelmingly positive. We bring preventative screenings because, I believe, preventative screenings save lives. I think everybody feels that way. The earlier we know or can detect, the better the chances are. So, the wellness screenings are covered by Cigna at 100% with zero patient responsibility, but to make the access to the care more convenient, we bring several of the screenings onsite. That includes vaccinations. So, we do skin cancer screenings by BayCare dermatologists, angio screenings, which is the test for, gives an early detection of heart disease, it's of the carotid artery and some arteries in your stomach and legs. We partner with BayCare to do an annual mammogram day for our employees and the spouses that are on the health plan, and the employees are entitled to one hour of work time to go get their mammogram done down at the hospital and then come back to work. We do onsite flu and shingle shots from May to July. This past May to July, we just partnered with Tampa General Hospital on a ColaGuard promotion where the employees just signed up and had the at-home test sent to them, and then they were followed up by a physician that's associated with the hospital if needed. This fall, we're adding onsite annual physicals with an annual blood work panel. So, there's a mobile bus now offered by Tampa General, and they'll bring their mobile bus here, right here in the State Street Center parking lot, to do the onsite physicals. We offer nutrition education where employees can meet one-on-one with a registered dietitian, fun wellness challenges throughout the year to get employees to participate in a little competitiveness, wellness bingo, walking challenges, things like that. Acknowledge and celebrate employees' milestone anniversaries for their years of service, beginning at five years, and employees have the opportunity to recognize and celebrate each other for going above and beyond with different awards such as Cheers for Peers, Homer Brunson Award Shrek and Gost, and the City Manager Impact Award. We have several opportunities where the employees can contribute to the community and help their coworkers in need. One of them is called the Turkey Strut. You may have heard about it. So, we combine it, an employee wellness walk about the week before Thanksgiving, where they walk in the neighborhood, but at the same time, they bring a donation item for Oldsmar Cares. The second is called the Angel Tree, where employees nominate a coworker who could use assistance during the holiday season with gifts for their children. The program is completely anonymous, and HR coordinates the participation directly with the employee, with the nominated employee. We create ornament tags that simply identify the child's age and the gift that the child wants, and we put them on the tree in the lobby of City Hall for other employees to come and take an ornament and then drop it anonymously to HR. Last year, we had six employees participate, and nine children benefited from the program. We have an annual fundraiser, which just ended. We call it Casual for a Class, where employees pay a dollar a day from May to July to wear jeans to work Monday through Thursday, and at the end of the fundraiser, the money is donated to the local elementary school. We have volunteer policy where the cities are allowed to use an hour a week to volunteer in the local community, and many of our employees use this time for the Lunch Pal program, where they go during their lunch hour and mentor the students at Forest Lakes and Oldsmar Elementary. So, that's under workforce development. Public relations. So, the purpose is to create a positive, safe, diverse, and productive work environment by ensuring that hiring is conducted fairly and equitably, and that city policies and procedures are adhered to. We will continue to provide guidance to departments for employee and community safety. Some of the bubbles you see up there, the quotes are taken directly from the employee survey that the city manager's office did last year. Sustainability. So, implementation of an electronic applicant tracking system so that we can eliminate our paper-based applications and onboarding procedures. We're in the process of implementing that now, so it's coming down the home stretch. I'm pretty excited about that. And the second bullet there is to continue to improve the digital storage of personnel files by eliminating the paper-based filing system. And so, up there, I provided just a picture of the HR magazine that came out this summer. It's from SHRM, the Society of Human Resources Management. It's a then and now. It's the evolution of HR in the workplace, and I'm proud to say that I've migrated with that second bullet from the left-hand side to the right-hand side.
Right.
I've got one or two metal filing cabinets left in the office.
Wow, nice.
Good job.
Yeah. And then, just to wrap it up, some fun pictures from our Employee Wellness Fair this past May, where we had all kinds of vendors onsite, onsite screenings, and you can see, we also had the hula-hooping program that the rec center offers come out, and you could see the skills that some of our employees have there, pretty good, right? That's all I had.
Thank you so much. Great job.
Thank you.
Great update. Thank you.
Kristin Garcia is city clerk next.
I realize you do so much.
Right? From when she starts.
Fantastic.
Wow, I want to work there.
Hello again. The service program of the city clerk. The city clerk is a charter official appointed by you city council. The city clerk's office manages records for the city, produces agendas and minutes, and oversees municipal elections. The city clerk's office also handles public records requests and lien searches for the We implement public records, we plan to implement public records tracking software to increase transparency for residents this year. Coordinate council swearing and reception, annual volunteer appreciation banquet, and the Janice Miller Citizens Academy. Organize electronic record storage to improve the efficiency and utilization of the software, and we are also planning on providing records management training to city staff. Some highlights from the city clerk budget include the public records request tracking software. This is a strategic goal. Records request tracking software will allow the public to make records requests on the city's website, track their request, and receive their requests through the portal. Staff will also use the portal to track and respond to requests. Archive social for social media, public records retention. Social media archiving software for records retention compliance. Archive social connects directly to your social networks to capture and preserve all the content your organization posts and engages with and helps stay compliant with public records law. records law. ICompass Agenda Solution, this is the city's agenda software, which publishes agenda packets for the boards and council. Laserfish Electronic Records Management Software. This stores city records electronically. The 2024 Municipal Election will be held on March 19th, 2024. This line item is budgeted for election and ballot cost from the Pinellas County Supervisor of Elections Office. Munich Code Ordinance Codification, Munich Code Codify City Ordinances. And that's all I had, so I'll turn it back over to City Manager, City Manager Donnelly.
Legal Counsel is the next section. So the Service Program is to provide general legal advice and guidance to council and staff. It includes labor attorney services, attends council meetings, code enforcement meetings, and acts as a city's prosecutor. Tom prepares all resolutions, ordinances, and other legal documents, reviews contracts, interfaces with the city's insurance carrier regarding claims and litigation, and provides litigation services as appropriate. So some of the highlights is there is, we've included a 6.7% increase in the budget, and that's really to account for legal services for pending litigation. So last year's budget was $331,000, and this year's is $353,000. Tatiana Childress?
Thank you, Felicia. Tatiana Childress, City of Oldsmar Planning and Redevelopment Director. So the Service Program for Planning and Redevelopment, the Planning and Redevelopment Department plans and implements effective growth management strategies through comprehensive planning, capital programming, and regulation of land development and building activities, downtown redevelopment program, code enforcement program, and business tax receipt program. The following slides include goals and objectives, council goals and objectives, and how our department addresses them. So under Economic Development, we try to boost the local economy by promoting commercial and industrial redevelopment and expansion, retain and attract businesses, continue to collaborate with Pinellas County for Employment Sites Program, implement Forward Pinellas Teals, target employment in industrial land study, partner with Upper Tampa Beach Amber for Business Assistant Program. Under Infrastructure, we encourage planned growth and infrastructure upgrades while protecting natural resources. Under Public Relations, we coordinate efficient development review services, promote community engagement and outreach, recommend policies, implement procedures to address changing needs, and encourage economic growth within the city. Under Transportation, we emphasize safety for pedestrians, bicyclists, and individuals with disabilities in the redevelopment strategy. We ensure adequate traffic flow, parking design, and access management for new projects and redevelopment. We ensure and promote multimodal design for new projects. Under Workforce Development, we ensure appropriate departmental staff training to maintain a high level of expertise. Under Quality of Place, we increase effort to uphold community standards, also known as code enforcement, including enforcing signage regulations throughout the city and enforcing the temporary corridor design plan standards. Under Sustainability, we improve resiliency by enforcing FEMA's higher regulatory standards and implement additional activities to increase community rating system ranking. Some of the main highlights under the General Fund include the 28.2 decrease. The decrease is mainly due to the remaining fees to the county for building plans and review and inspection services, due to the cost neutrality under the new interlocal agreement that took place in 2021. So we still have a few outstanding permits for which we schedule those inspections internally, but the majority of the new inspections and building plans are issued through Pinellas County directly, and they collect the fees and charge the contractor directly those building fees, and we do not have any fees that we pay to the county anymore, so we have the cost neutrality. It also includes $34,000 for the Business Assistant Program. And back to law enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The law enforcement program. The Service Program, you all just approved this contract, but we've contracted with Pinellas County Sheriff's Office to provide the services, and that, the services include two deputies 24/7, one additional deputy eight hours, seven days a week, two community policing officers for 40 hours a week each, two traffic enforcement officers at 40 hours a week each, and then eight school crossing guards. So this represents a net increase of 6.82% for the next fiscal year. To $2,175,720.
Good evening. Is it morning yet?
Morning.
It's time for a shift change.
Yeah, that's right.
Happy Wednesday.
Fire rescue. Our, just our service program. Fire Rescue Department provides fire protection, emergency medical services, and fire prevention and life safety services. The department also plays a role in emergency management, community risk reduction. Our mission is to provide excellent service while protecting and enhancing the quality of life for our community. And just some of our goals and objectives. Offer our residents and businesses public education on CPR, first aid, babysitting safety, disaster preparedness, and fire extinguisher use. And under Infrastructure, test all fire suppression equipment for NFPA compliance, document results and repair or replace failures. We utilize third-party vendors to meet numerous standards related to apparatus, pump testing, pressure testing of our fire hose, bunker gear inspections, load testing our ladders, and the aerial and air pack and SCBA compressor evaluations. And then, under Workforce Development, provide a minimum of 18 hours of firefighter training per month to all frontline personnel, and provide an officer development program that delivers a minimum of 12 hours of annual supervisory training. These hours represent minimum national standard training. They're not all-inclusive of our training throughout the year. We do perform a significant amount of additional training. And then, under Quality of Place, respond to emergency incidents within 7 minutes, 30 seconds, 90% of the time. This is a Pinellas County EMS goal that we've adopted, and includes responses from mutual aid partners, so Safety Harbor, Palm Arise Lake, they respond when we're not available. Inspect all fire hydrants annually, perform annual fire inspections for 33% of commercial and industrial businesses. This provides every business with annual, not annual, but inspection every three years. We do have about 100 high-risk facilities that we do inspect annually. Monitor on-scene treatment, NMS patient care reports, monitor fire incident reports for accuracy and consistency. And then, just a quick overview of some call statistics. We do measure data on a calendar year rather than the fiscal year for consistency with Pinellas County EMS, and it helps us identify trends more clearly. You can see our crews responded approximately 2,200 incidents in 2022. It's a lot of twos. And as of June 30th, we're on track for a similar count this year. And then, that below table there, just to tie back to that response goal, our Oldsmar units responded to 95% of those calls within the seven-and-a-half-minute benchmark, and then, once we factor in mutual aid, we're still meeting that 90% goal. And then, just some quick budget highlights. City expects to receive approximately $588,000 from Pinellas County EMS Authority. That's part of our ALS First Responder Agreement. You guys approved that, an amendment to that coming up. Will approve that, sorry. We also have budgeted for physical and mental well-being evaluations, just over $16,000. The NFPA compliance procedures I mentioned earlier in our goals cost around just over $12,000. We have a fire extinguisher training system that's about 20 years old, so we're planning to replace that for $8,500. And then, we plan on purchasing four AEDs to place at the Oldsmar Sports Complex, and I'll put one in each concession stand. That's it. And then, up next.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Daniel Simpson.
Excited to still be here. Daniel Simpson, Director of Public Works, First Technical Services. The Technical Services Division manages our city projects, infrastructure, and engineering. They oversee the capital improvement program and provide construction expertise to various departments and citizens. The goals of this division are to procure professional service needs for the city's construction, manage various projects, including design and completion, monitor infrastructure and process permits efficiently, coordinate with contractors to ensure quality work and materials, communicate effectively with the public through multiple methods in order to maximize public input and awareness of capital projects. You'll see in a lot of, in our department, we've really tried to emphasize increasing our engagement, and so I've had, all of our supervisors are expected to increase their engagement this year. Additionally, we'll coordinate with various departments to promote multimodal transportation, manage construction projects while maintaining grant compliance, oversee completion of construction, documents and bidding, and manage paving contracts and monitor and inspect existing roadway facilities. Maintain competency by training personnel, updating procedures, and promoting cross-discipline education and licensure. So for the General Fund, generally, Tech Services doesn't have a lot of money in their division, because they're managing all these projects and construction. So the capital projects that are in, will be in design for at least a portion of the next fiscal year are the Douglas Road Project, State Street Ditch, St. Petersburg Drive Streetscape, and the Roundabout at Bayview and St. Pete Drive. We expect in construction, Harbor Palms Phase II and III for a small portion of next fiscal year, the WRF Control Building, and the Douglas Road Project. You can see, we have a 10.26% increase in the fund, but that's generally in personal services. Next is our Streets Division. The Streets Division ensures safe and efficient travel by maintaining city roads, sidewalks, and rides away. They remove debris, repair utility cuts, and maintain traffic control signs. They also prepare banners and signs for city events, and provide maintenance of traffic for special events and repairs. The goals and objectives for this division are to keep city-owned infrastructure in good condition and use asset management to stay organized, respond quickly to sidewalk complaints, repair potholes, communicate effectively with the public, address facility deficiencies, and provide great customer service. To oversee sidewalk and curb replacement, maintain street signs, inspect sidewalks regularly, and add ADA-accessible facilities within budget limitations. Improve procedures, train staff, and promote cross-disciplinary education for skilled workers. We're finding that our best way to have a great resilient staff is to have, to develop the employees we have. So we're really focusing on our department on trying to train our employees. Some highlights in the Streets Fund, on the right, we have the resurfacing list that's expected for next fiscal year, which is Pine Avenue, Arlington Avenue, Buckingham Avenue, Oakwood Boulevard, and Graybark Drive. Those are portions of those streets. $375,000 is for, in this, in this fund is for electricity. This is where our streetlights are paid for, and that's a large increase over the last few years. $34,000 for traffic signals and CSX crossing maintenance. We have $14,000 for fuel. $15,000 is budgeted for traffic calming devices, and $23,750 for signs and banners. We've decreased engineering services to $0. $20,000 for traffic markings, and uniform costs have increased due to inflation, and we're attempting to raise the standard. You'll see on the capital outlay, $19,000 for the message board. That is a dynamic message board we have for events or for roadway closures. We need, ours is in need of, we need to buy a new one. Next, we're on to the library, and I believe the City Manager will be doing that?
I will, thank you, Daniel. So Susan Hurley couldn't be with us tonight. So the General Fund, the Service Program, the Public Library offers a diverse range of materials and resources, including books, magazines, audiobooks, digital media, and programming events to provoke intellectual growth, cultural awareness, and lifelong learning with opportunities for all ages. The library really aims to be a hub of knowledge and entertainment, engaging and inspiring its patrons. So some of the goals that it supports is the infrastructure, you know, the building's aging, so we're going to continue to, to maintain it. And the quality of place, to expand the services and programs offered to library patrons, and collaborate with other departments regarding programming. We've really seen that grown over the last couple of years, of the different kinds of programs that are offered in the library. I think this next slide is, it was surprising to me, so I'm going to tell you all why it was surprising to me, but 55% of our circulation is still print. So, you know, you can see where that's divided up. 16% is actually DVDs, and so 12% is ebooks and magazines, the digital newspaper. If you all haven't seen that, it's a variety of newspapers online available, and e-audiobooks. So, you know, I was surprised at how much of the marketplace is still materials. And so, some of the highlights of the fund is shared funding. Pinellas Public Library Cooperative is expected to continue, and they fund us at about $235,000 for next year. And then, they've also added the Glazer Children's Museum and the Collection on Palmetto for the Museum Pass Program. Now, those, those are active programs now, these two new ones. The Collection on Palmetto is a automobile museum, and I understand they have Oldsmobiles. Is that correct, Mayor?
Yes.
So, and then also color and wireless printing is now available. So you can see the capital outlay, you guys have already reviewed this, but the roof alone's about $180,000, and that's just an estimate. And then, so you can see where the increase is in the budget for next year.
They have some really old Oldsmobiles there.
That's what I understand, I haven't been personally.
Yeah, I was there, I saw them, they're very, very old.
So, some chip pots. Parks and Recreation Director.
All right, all right, time for some energy here, all right.
Get up and do lunches.
You got some coffee?
We don't need coffee, we just do fun, that's all, that's all, that's all. So I think by the end of my slides here, we'll officially be halfway through the presentation, so it gives me that energy, all right? So let's kick that thing off, let's kick it off a little bit here. So we've got the Parks, the Park Service Program. So our Parks Department maintains and beautifies 11 of parks, medians, and city properties, such as City Hall, Library, Fire Station, right-of-ways, and they also perform other special projects. These maintenance levels that we have vary from season to season, of course, because of the weather, and that affects our growth rates. Some of the goals and objectives that we have related to our infrastructure are that we want to continue to maintain our parks at the highest level within our means, okay? We prioritize our, our needs with the understanding that equipment, products, and materials all go up in cost. We've talked about that earlier at extent this afternoon, or this evening, or this morning, wherever we are. So, but we want, we look to continue to conduct regular inspections to maintain awareness of our amenities and our structures, and to make those repairs as needed. In regards to Public Relations, we are going to collaborate with the Leisure Service Advisory Board this year to conduct a park user survey. That'll help us get a better understanding of who our park users are and what they're actually doing when they go to our parks. Oops, excuse me. When it comes to quality of place, we look to maintain safe places for our younger users, and we'll continue, continue to conduct two annual playground inspections. We do one in January, and we do one in July. From a sustainability standpoint, to meet this goal, we'll From a sustainability standpoint, to meet this goal, we'll, we're going to continue to identify areas of need for exotic removal and address those as needed. Additionally, we'll continue to conduct coastal cleanups with some of our volunteer groups. Karen Beal usually heads those up and she does a really good job of recruiting and organizing and leading those activities. From a workforce development standpoint, we're going to continue to maintain an educated staff by training our new employees in the landscape management best practices. And we're also going to provide monthly in-house training. Some of the highlights for the Parks Division, all right. It starts in Parks, going back to Parks and Recreation, okay? That's, that's really exciting for us and as Felicia had mentioned earlier, it's, it's more of the, the commonality of recognition in our industry is Parks and Recreation.
You gotta get new shirts and new like.
Okay, okay, all right.
Okay, Felicia says no new shirts, you gotta wear the old stuff.
What's the name of the advisory board, are we changing it from Leisure Services to Parks and Rec?
That's a discussion that we're going to have.
Oh, wonderful.
Wow.
So we are looking to, other highlights are, we're looking, as mentioned earlier, to downgrade a maintenance operator position to facilities attendant, which is kind of more in line in the typical duties they perform. Those are the two weekend staff that we have that help to get our parks set up and manage our, our athletic tournaments on the weekends. Contractual Landscape Services will be at $74,000 to include the mowing of Sheffield Park. And this coming year will be our alternating year of holding the tree giveaway. All right. Moving on to Recreation. All right, so the Recreation Division, they provide activities and programs and events that enhance the quality of life, build stronger community and have a positive economic impact on our community. Some of the highlights in the goals and objectives in regards to public relations, we have another initiative next year with the Leisure Services Advisory Board to conduct a programming desire survey. We'll receive feedback from the community on their programming and amenity desires. From a quality of place standpoint, we look to increase participation in our summer specialty camps, looking to continue to look at some of the trends, what's new and try to continue to offer those to families in the summertime. Those are usually those half-day camps that you see. And we are going to continue to try to steadily increase our participation in our programming that we've seen over the past few years. And also continue with a, to offer a variety of activities. John Lindsay and his staff, they meet regularly, they, they look at trends, they get community feedback and they try to stay ahead of the programming with, with what they offer and I think they've done a great job. Some of the highlights in the General Fund for Recreation are, they're an increase in instructor pay and this is due to our increased participation levels, but the good thing about that is it's offset by revenues. So anything that we pay out, we're actually bringing in extra money to cover those expenses. Let's see, and then also we're going to look to continue our family programming events like Family Game Night, Kite Day and Movies in the Park. All right, Oldsmar Sports Complex. All right, Oldsmar Sports Complex, as you all know, it's a dynamic athletic facility. It's a venue that features baseball and softball fields, soccer and football fields, a hockey facility, right, Mayor, right?
Yes.
Okay, and, and BMX. We host local athletic activities daily as well as monthly regional tournaments and national events. For the goals and objectives at the Oldsmar Sports Complex for the, in economic development is to continue to host regional events. These events bring people in from around the region and the nation for tournaments and competitions. And typically in the fall and in the spring, we're hosting at least one baseball tournament a month out at the facility and then we have a large soccer tournament in both the fall and in the spring. From an infrastructure standpoint, our goal is to continue to maintain the playing surfaces that we recently renovated last year. And from a public relations standpoint, we'd like to have, we'd like to develop a volunteer program at the BMX facility. You know, the staff out there have done a good job of rebuilding the programming out there and creating positive relationships with the parents and the families. And what we're looking to do is build a volunteer program that will assist the staff in their daily operations when they run races and you have, so we have people at starters, we have starters and scorers and corner people, so that it takes some of the load off of them because they do try to recruit here and there, but we're going to try to build a little bit more of a formal program out there. And I do have to mention that we do have currently, the UCI World Championships are taking place as we speak now. We have eight riders that have trained at our facility that are actually, have qualified and are participating, you know, in those.
Scotland, right?
In Scotland, Glasgow, Scotland, yes.
That's cool that we did a social media post on it too.
Yes, yep. So some of the, uh, work, uh, let's see. And then workforce development, again, like we do in the parks, we're going to register our full-time staff for the best management practices and then also conduct those monthly in-house training exercises. And some of the highlights out there, just like we did in parks, we downgraded a maintenance operator position to facilities attendant, continue to host the regional baseball and softball tournament, excuse me, baseball and soccer tournaments, and then of course host BMX events. And that's all I have for the Parks and Recreation Division.
Public Communications, new title as well. The service program is to connect the city to stakeholders through advertising, media partnerships and, and press. So this includes all marketing, branding, communication efforts, including website and social media management. The division also oversees public art programming. So supporting the council's goals, sustainability, continue the paper publication of the annual, of the tri-annual magazine as a combined marketing tool for all departments in lieu of the monthly utility bill insert. Increase the digital footprint of the city, promotions and services through websites and social media. Infrastructure, create the public art master plan, which as you heard, we're doing in-house. So develop art opportunities through the provision of public art and art exhibits. I saw that, that Joan Byrne was hanging the new exhibit today in City Hall, it's pretty fantastic. Quality of place, you know, we're going to continue to apply and hopefully receive continued accreditation for the Florida Municipal Communication Association's Certificate of Excellence in Government Communications. And then we're going to continue to apply for awards as we see appropriate and if they're a good match. Public Relations is to continue the development of digital platform applications to promote capital improvement projects and city initiatives, enhance the city's assets by implementing new branding standards, expand the city's digital assets through photography, video and podcast platforms, provide training to internal customers on branding policies and procedures, website and social media management. We're actively doing this and we're going to continue to do it, continue stakeholder outreach toward advertising and marketing initiatives. New website this year, we, there was a lot of accomplishments this year and a lot of continuations. The highlights is we're changing the department name to Public Communications. We're going to continue to fund, so we call it ZenCity Platform, but really that's your social media data analytics that I send to every month to really give us the pulse on the social media. And then also in, on the backside of the website, it's a community engagement platform. So if you go to the website and you hit Projects and you can see all the timeline and the surveys are all run through that platform as well. And then we're going to continue to distribute 6,950 copies of the magazine directly to people's homes. And so that's at a cost of $32,000 for the city, that includes all the printing and the publication and the, and the postage.
Felicia, after a couple of months, do you think we'll have data to see how people are using the redesigned website now as opposed to how people were using it before? I feel like the website was so disjointed and we had so many different links and broken spaces. So I'm curious to see if we're going to be able to see new data about the new website at some point.
So we're constantly collecting that data analytics, so we'll compare it to last year's, but I couldn't agree more. So thank you for noticing that, I think that the new website is way easier.
So much easier.
And so, and, and so you guys can see the, the difference in the budget. There's actually a, a very slight decrease. Administrative Services.
Okay, just when you thought it was safe and you didn't have to hear any more from me tonight, I'm back.
Starts in Administrative Services.
Ends in Administrative Services. I start in Parks, but. I have the opportunity to present to you tonight, the Administrative Services Department. We're now on page 116 of the budget document. So Administrative Services oversees three broad city functions, namely Finance, IT and GIS. The Finance Division is actually located in the Water Sewer Fund, so our amazing accounting administrator, Amy, or Quadruple A, as I'm trying out the new nickname tonight, will be discussing this in more detail later when we get to the Water Sewer Fund. IT manages the city's IT infrastructure, including development, configuration, security and procurement of equipment for the citywide IT network, including the fiber optic network that links city buildings together. And GIS manages the GIS functions, including database development, maintenance and end-user support for cloud-based ArcGIS Pro system, mapping and verification of GPS data that's been collected by consultants and other users in other departments. Supporting the council's goals and objectives for fiscal '24, the department includes some infrastructure by providing a secure, reliable and robust IT network, sustainability by increasing cybersecurity measures and updating risk management strategies, quality of place by updating the GIS strategic plan to support end-user departments with their projects that help improve the community, and workforce development, including the support of mobile and remote work environments, increasing the use of cloud-based applications and increasing the deployment of city mobile devices. Highlights for the Administrative Services Department include, excuse me, $150,000 in other contractual services, which, excuse me, include the citywide Microsoft Office 365 subscription, firewalls, network assessments, including external penetration testing and employee IT security training. Also including, included this year is $15,500 for ArcGIS Pro, a subscription for that software for citywide use, and $105,000 for IT infrastructure and equipment, including servers and switches and other necessary equipment to maintain and protect the city's network. And lastly, you'll see in that capital outlay box, we have $40,000 for AV system improvements in this very room, which includes some of the back office hardware related to digital recording that our brilliant GIS analyst and database specialist, Wes Hernandez, is back there right now recording this meeting with. So thank you, Wes. And that's it for Administrative Services. Back to Director Simpson.
Thanks, Garrett. Okay, we're on to Fleet Maintenance. The Fleet Maintenance Division ensures the safe and efficient operation of city-owned vehicles and equipment. They offer repair, maintenance and preventative services to keep everything in good condition. Fleet also troubleshoots fuel systems and provides welding and fabrication for other departments. The goals and objectives are to complete preventative maintenance on the fleet by July 31st, 2024, utilize asset management software for tracking preventative and reactive maintenance, and update procedures, train equipment operators on maintenance and vehicle responsibilities. So what we're finding is a lot of our employees, if we want them to be trained on exactly, you know, checking the oil, all those types of things, so that they can do the little maintenance that helps us in the long run. Some highlights, we're eliminating the fleet supervisor position and the cost of vehicle repairs generally are increasing in complexity and ti, over time and therefore increasing in cost. Next, it's going to start back with Chip.
We'll end in Facilities. All right. So the Facility Maintenance Division, they provide services to maintain clean and safe buildings for our staff and our citizens. They also oversee and perform construction projects and conduct routine preventative maintenance. Goals and objectives under the infrastructure section for the Facility Maintenance Division is to continue to assess the city's building assets and to update the maintenance of building book annually. We also strive to stay ahead of the game through scheduled preventative maintenance. Quality of place, when possible, we try to complete our work orders within two days of receiving them, keeping in mind that some requests are more involved than others. For workforce development, we're going to continue to provide relevant monthly training for our staff. Some of the highlights in Facilities is that they are under Leisure Services, so they will too fall under Parks and Recreation. And we are going to, we have $123,000 in this next budget request to continue our contracted janitorial services. And that kind of sums up our Facilities Division.
Okay, moving on to General Fund transfers. As we've discussed, inter-fund transfers, we'll be talking about the expenditure side here from General Fund, only include one this year. And you can see that $380,000 transferred from General Fund to the Harbor Palms Debt Service Fund for that governmental portion of the Harbor Palms Infrastructure Improvements Project. And then that decrease, as we've talked about, of approximately $180,000 is due to the suspension of the transfer to the Public Safety Impact Fund. All right. Moving on to General Fund Contingency Reserve. So the name of the account kind of says it all. These are reserves set aside as contingency for unforeseen emergencies, unanticipated items or unknown expenditures, such as the cost escalations we've all seen this year. But we don't know what they're going to be 12 months from now. And as Councilmember Gannon alluded to earlier, this would also be the place where the city would pull funding from for a disaster or hurricane response, should that be needed. The contingency reserve in General Fund, as you can see here, increased $635,000 to $703,770 for fiscal '24. It is important to note that as we begin the current, as we began the current fiscal year, so fiscal '23, we had an original budget of $586,505 in contingency. So that increase isn't quite as dramatic when you look at it that way. Council then approved the use of a part of these, a part of these contingency funds during the year to fund the comprehensive plan update, fight for the union contract negotiations and other unanticipated expenses. So these reserves are now down this year to $68,805, represented by that blue bar you see in that chart.
So for example, the library roof, we've estimated it at $180,000, right? Let's say construction costs have escalated, labor costs have escalated, we go to implement that project this year because that's the plan, right? Let's say it comes back at 200, instead of 180, it comes back at $210,000. It comes out of this, right?
Absolutely, so we'd bring that item to you and say, hey, it's over budget. In addition to approving the procurement process for that roof repair, we're also going to need you to in tandem approve a reduction in contingency reserve to fund that, that difference.
So do we not know the data for '21, '22?
So that is an accounting quirk that perhaps Amy can get into a little bit later.
Amy and I will talk maybe tomorrow, tomorrow, on the next, the tomorrow, after tomorrow. But that's really interesting and kind of slightly terrifying to me that for fiscal year '22, '23, we're down to $68,000.
Yeah.
Because if there was, let's say, I don't know, an early year hurricane or tropical storm?
Yes. So that's why you'll see, and we've emphasized throughout the presentation in the budget document, we're really trying to stay conservative with this approach, including in the contingency reserve account.
Ate it up pretty quick.
Yeah. So now there's $68,000 left for this year. So if you look at this increase of about $115,000 from that $586,000 original budget in fiscal '23 to the $703,000 proposed original budget for '24, I think this kind of sheds light on our efforts to kind of deal with that uncertainty and be a little bit more prepared in the future. So should some of those macroeconomic conditions improve and should we not have some of those big cost escalations that we're afraid we might? It's not like that money disappears, so any of that unneeded contingency reserve gets returned to General Fund as on assigned fund balance and available for future years, so. And then as part of the charitable donation allocation process this evening, council allocated an additional $9,500 over the original budget request of $75,000. So in addition to reducing your travel expenses by $6,000, you'll see this contingency reserve amount now is going to be decreased by about $3,500, well, by $3,500. Okay, so now we'll review the city's other governmental funds, so we've gotten past the big one, the General Fund. We're on page 134 of the budget book and we'll start with the Public Safety Impact Fund. So this fund is restricted for capital expenditures for fire-related capital equipment and improvements. Impact fee revenue for this year is estimated at $25,000, although these fees are highly dependent on new development during any one fiscal year, so they're very hard to, to estimate. As mentioned, the transfer from General Fund was suspended for fiscal '24, so you'll see that in the budget book. That transfer is now $0 for fiscal '24, it was $183,000 in fiscal '23. So using current reserves of $85,000, excuse me, appropriate reserves of $85,000 and the revenue anticipated for fiscal '24, we've got $135,000 of expenditures planned, including mobile radio replacements, station cabinetry, kitchen renovations at the fire station, replacement of tile floors at the fire station, and the purchase of a marine unit to assist with fire and rescue operations in the Mobley Preserve and the kayak trail. Turning to page, oops, not the next slide, though. Turning to page 136 in your budget book, the Parkland Dedication Fund is used to account for proceeds of the Parkland facility and impact fees collected on new development. These impact fee revenues are estimated to be about $10,000 in the fiscal year, and no new projects are planned. So all funds received will be saved for future park improvements. Moving on to the Multimodal Impact Fund on page 138, we are budgeting again $10,000 for the city's portion of these impact fees. The remainder of those fees go to the county. Again, no new projects are planned, so all funds will be saved for future transportation improvements. Okay. Now let's move on to the CRA Fund, starting on page 140 in your budget book. Okay, so looking at the revenue side for the CRA Fund, we can see we've got $400,000 budgeted for the city's portion of the tax increment financing, and $480,000 from the county's portion. And we'll be using about $1.3 million of appropriated reserves, primarily to fund the CRA's portion of the St. Petersburg Drive Streetscape and Drainage Improvements Project. And looking at the expenditure side, we can see the vast majority, as I mentioned, is gonna be, the CRA's budget for '24 is gonna go to capital outlay for that St. Pete Drive project. 3% of the remaining, of the budget will be going to fund the director's salary, and 8% will be going to operating expenditures. I'd like to turn it over to Director Childress for a discussion on what's going on in CRA.
Thank you, Gary. Been waiting for this the whole evening. Community Redevelopment Agency Fund. So under the service program, it includes the continuous effort, we include continuous effort to pursue redevelopment of the city whole site. We work on streetscape improvements in the CRA. We continue with the downtown mobility study in coordination with Forward Panellus. We also continue with safe routes to school program. Also, we try to continue the support of town center code and architectural design guidelines within the CRA, and promote both residential and business incentive programs within the Community Redevelopment District. Thank you. Back to you. Thank you.
Well done.
We're almost done with me. All right. Moving on to the Debt Service Funds, those servicing governmental debt. We're on page 142 in your budget book. There's that beautiful picture of the Veterans Memorial Park. As we've mentioned, the final payment was completed in October 2022. So no revenue or expenditures are budgeted in this fund for fiscal '24. Moving on to page 144 in your budget book, you'll see the Harbor Palms Infrastructure Improvements Debt Service Fund. I'm not gonna say that again. Which is used to service the governmental portion of the debt for streets and sidewalks restoration for Phases 1 and 2 of the Harbor Palms Infrastructure Project. Debt service is funded by a transfer from General Fund and is secured not by taxes, but by covenant to budget and appropriate. This loan, which included a three-year construction draw period, matures in 2033, as we talked about earlier in the presentation.
They're paving the streets in Phase 2 tomorrow. Thank the Lord. It's been over two years.
That is excellent news. All right. The Capital Improvement Fund. Page 146 of your budget document, our Big Projects Fund. So the Capital Improvement Fund is used to accumulate resources for the city's major governmental capital projects. Most of these projects have complex funding from multiple sources. Revenues include, as listed on the side, local option fuel taxes, which fund in part street resurfacing and sidewalk improvements; Penny for Panellus funds, which are allocated to various projects as approved by council's Penny Project Allocation Plan; state appropriations, $1 million for the roundabout on St. Pete Drive in fiscal '24; and federal grants, this year including $1 million for St. Pete Drive, as well as interest for investments. And again, I'll say it again, no new debt fiscal '24. All right. So I'm gonna turn things over to Daniel to talk about what's going on in the Capital Improvement Fund.
So we won't spend a lot of time on this because we had a whole workshop on it. But the Douglas Road Project, as we've mentioned, that's in the Drainage and Road Profile Improvement Project, will be re-budgeted for next year. This is generally due to our delays in our design from our consultant. But the funding sources are, there's a $3,500, 3.5 million from state Florida grants, $190,000 from Penny for Panellus, and 2.89 million that are from the Stormwater Improvement Fund, but we're using ARPA money to pay for that. So that's $6.58 million. Here's a summary of the other projects that we have in this fund. But again, we've gone over those in the last meeting. Since it's 10, we won't go through all of them. So now, I think we're going to Amy to talk about Water and Sewer Operating Funds.
Hi. Amy Ratliff, Accounting Administrator.
And goalie.
And all-around goalie. Thank you very much. Thanks for remembering. So now we're gonna talk about the city's proprietary funds, or enterprise funds. These include the Water and Sewer Operating Fund, the Water and Sewer Impact Fund, the Stormwater Utility Fund, and the Solid Waste Fund. As Garrett noted earlier, these funds operate like business and rely primarily on user fees to support their operations. First up, we will take a look at the Water and Sewer Fund, which is the largest of the enterprise funds. This fund includes several divisions, including Finance, Utilities Maintenance, Distribution and Collection, Water Reclamation, the RO Facility, and Environmental Management. The revenue detail we're looking at, the detail is on page 153 of your budget document. This revenue chart clearly shows that the primary source of revenue is the user fees or the charges for services coming in at 51%. We have intergovernmental revenue at 24%, appropriated reserve at 22%, and miscellaneous revenue at 3%. This is the same information in table format. We have 4.25 in intergovernmental revenue, which includes 2.1 million in ARPA funds, as well as 2.15 million in the Resilient Florida Grant. Charges for services is roughly 9 million. It is important to note here that there is a 5.5% increase to the water and sewer rates, which was approved for fiscal year '24 as year 2 of a five-year rate schedule increase. The rate schedules are structured to encourage water conservation. Historically, this does not result in a corresponding revenue increase due to the lowered consumption. We are observing that in the current fiscal year. Therefore, we have only budgeted for about a 1.3% increase in that overall revenue. Miscellaneous revenue of $458,000 reflects an increase in projected investment earnings. And we have 3.9 million in appropriated reserve to fund capital projects, for a total of $17,677,960. Next, we're looking at the expense overview. You can see we have Personnel Services at 24%, Operating Expenses at 19%, Capital Outlay at 50%, Debt Service at 3%, and Reserves and Transfers at 4%. Again, we're looking at same information in a table view. On a whole, we can see that the fund is decreasing by 14.8%. And this is primarily due to the reduction in capital outlay.
Can I ask one question on that?
Certainly.
Just along the line items, I'm looking at that interest and investment, there's a 487% increase. That's right? Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
All right. So now we get into the individual budget requests by each division, and we will start with Finance. This is page 155 of your budget document. So, the Finance Division of the Administrative Services administers, supervises, and coordinates, and controls the city's financial activity and functions. It is divided into four broad sections, including Accounting, Procurement, Utility Billing, and Management and Budget. The Finance goals and objectives are to manage finances efficiently, increase electronic transactions, automate vendor processes, improve contract management, and update risk management procedures. We look to further improve the fixed asset auditing process, incorporating GIS information as appropriate. And we strive to continue to receive the GFOA Certificate for Excellence in Financial Reporting and the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. We would like to develop and implement an e-bidding program to receive and evaluate solicitations. And we continue to coordinate with city management to produce a budget indicative of the city council's mission statement and strategic priorities. We work hard to provide ongoing training to our internal customers, i.e. our fellow employees, on policies and procedures, purchasing card systems, the procurement procedures, and the annual budget development processes. And we plan to identify, implement, and train employees on a new enterprise resource planning system. Some of the Finance Division highlights include the addition of a part-time customer service clerk in utility billing, an increase in computer support services expense, which include allocated costs for the annual ERP system maintenance, including any recurring fees associated with a new ERP system. And capital expense highlights include the first phase of the ERP system implementation, which is expected at the end of next year. And I will hand it back over to Daniel for the public works portion of the fund.
All right. Utility Maintenance. The Utility Maintenance Division provides mechanical and electrical maintenance for the city's utilities, including lift stations, water treatment plants, and supply wells. They also support other divisions in emergency situations with, and with electromechanical expertise for projects. And I believe that's a picture of one of our beautiful wells. The goals and objectives for Utility Maintenance are to use software and tools to locate and maintain city assets, manage the Gull Air Lift Station rehabilitation, inspect WRF construction projects daily, offer technical support and data for the wastewater reclamation facility master plan, develop and participate in educational campaigns to provide the public details regarding how utility services are provided, continue to rapidly respond to resident requests regarding customer questions regarding utility services, complete annual preventative maintenance inspection and infrastructure improvements as planned in the CIP to ensure city services are available, update procedures and document emergency management protocols, encourage technical training for skilled staffing. Some of the highlights for this operating budget, we have $26,735 for standby pay. This is a recommendation from the pay study. $27,000 for lift station electricity, and $44,000 for maintenance of pump stations. This has increased from previous years because we're including fencing whenever we update the pump system. So, we're going through and replacing fencing as we do that. Okay. Next, we're on to Distribution and Collection. This division maintains all water, sewer, and reclaimed water distribution piping, valves, and fire hydrants while ensuring regulatory compliance. They also maintain and read all utility meters. The goals and objectives are assess in-line sewers, use asset management software and electronic tools to schedule maintenance, track regulatory inspections with electronic tools, support meter replacement project for improved data collection and customer service, complete annual preventative maintenance inspection and infrastructure improvements as planned in the CIP to ensure city services are available, educate the public on utility services through campaigns, workshops, and social media, respond quickly to customer questions, update and document standard operating procedures throughout the division, continue to encourage licensure to ensure our highly skilled staffing. We have $18,000 in this fund for fuel costs. $49,000 are budgeted for meters. We've had large increases in all of our fittings, hydrants, and backflows. Anything that's made out of metal is a lot more expensive than it has been in years previous. On our capital outlay, many of these items you've already seen, but some of the ones that were between $2,000 and $25,000, the GNSS Handheld Receiver. That is the Global Navigation Satellite System. But basically, that is what we use to locate a pipe, meaning when we have the pipe dug up, we put the unit on it to say where that is, so that we can save that data in our atlas forever. And we know where it is when we go to dig it up.
Or people dig up stuff that's ours and accidentally...
Right. It's important that we know where it is so that whenever someone's digging, we locate. And I'll go to the next, another thing that we have is the Pipe Locator. For $11,000, that is the device that tells you where it is under the ground. So, if we don't have those GPS points, that's where we're going and determining where that pipe is using ground penetrating radar. We also have a Plate Compactor that's used to compact soil underneath before we put in a pipe, because if you don't have a compact soil, it'll settle and cause leaks. And finally, the Trench Box for $10,000. This is a device that's used to have safe excavations when we're over four feet, or five feet, so that the walls don't collapse in on you. We have a trench box, but we need a smaller one for tighter spaces. Some of the other highlights, we're reclassifying the Distribution Operator Training to a Utility Locator Technician. We found that the locator position is a, has a ton of responsibility and probably shouldn't be the lowest-graded employee in the department. Uniform costs have increased due to inflation and attempting to raise standard. $77,200 is budgeted in computer software. We're changing vendors in our GIS-based asset management work order system. The current system does not meet the requirements of state mandates. So we're mandated to have, in the last few years, a GIS-based asset management software, which we have purchased, but the one we have does not meet the law. So we're changing vendors. This also includes the cost of the software associated with our touch and radio read meters, because we're attempting to continue to modernize on those meters. Next is the Water Reclamation Facility. The Division provides advanced wastewater treatment for all wastewater entering the Water Reclamation Facility, produce high-quality reclaimed water for the approximate 1,900 reclaimed water customers, manage reclaimed water aquifer storage well, and then meet or exceed the environmental regulatory requirements of the appropriate state and federal agencies. The Division will upgrade infrastructure with projects budgeted in the Capital Improvement Plan, including the Water Reclamation Facility Control Building, aeration upgrades, the WRF Master Plan, filter expansion, security upgrades, and coordination of the Master Plan project in the CIP. Next, maintain city services with annual maintenance and improvements, update emergency management procedures, optimize operations to control cost and maintain water quality, support control building and filter expansion projects, minimize discharge of the Tampa Bay. We're always trying to get less water into Tampa Bay. We're always trying to get less water into Tampa Bay. Next is to educate the public on utility services through campaigns and workshops, coordinate with public communications on division projects and reclaim water service interruptions, respond quickly to water quality queries and service requests, update and document standard operating procedures throughout the division, continue to encourage licensure to ensure highly skilled staffing, and select and train a lead operator for succession planning and redundancy. So, the highlights for the division. We are upgrading one of our operator positions to a lead operator. This, we found that as people are moving into retirement, we need to develop the next person. And whenever that chief is on vacation or out, we really want to have a clear second in command. A hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars is budgeted for chemicals. We've seen large increases over the last two years in our chemicals. A hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars is budgeted for maintenance of the plant. This increase, these increases are due to materials and equipment and repair cost escalations. You can see we're spending a lot in capital in the next, these, next year. The Water Reclamation Facility Control Building was rebudgeted for fiscal year 2324. The project, the estimate came in much higher than we were expecting. So, two point one million dollars is being paid for through ARPA funds. We have a two point one five million dollar state grant, and the Water and Sewer Operating Fund is budgeted to spend two point three million in funding, although we are trying to get more money from the state to cover that expense. Alright, next on to the reverse osmosis water treatment plant. This division provides high-quality, safe potable water and reliable fire protection water service to the city while meeting or exceeding all state and federal agency environmental and drinking water standards. The division will maintain, upgrade, and preserve infrastructure through projects in the Capital Improvement Plan, including membrane replacement, SCADA improvements, and asset management software. Security efforts will continue to modernize, and the most recent master plan will guide maintenance and infrastructure projects. So, we're wrapping up our master plan for that project, the water supply plan. Next, educate the public on utility services through campaigns and social media, provide annual consumer conference report, and respond to resident inquiries efficiently and effectively. We want to maintain city services through annual maintenance and improvements while optimizing operations to control cost and ensure water quality, update and document standard operating procedures throughout the division, continue to encourage licensure to ensure highly skilled staffing, select and train lead operator for succession planning and redundancy. We have, just like we did in WRF, we're having in the RO, we're select, we have budgeted a lead operator. So, it's the same justification. We, three hundred and two thousand one hundred and sixty dollars is budgeted for electricity, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars in chemicals, and both of those have gone up substantially in the last few years. Engineering services, we have a hundred and ten thousand dollars budgeted to support, that's support for our SCADA system, which is the computer system that runs the plant. Wetlands and hydro-geological monitoring to ensure minimal environmental impacts due to our well field. Our next division is environmental management. The purpose of the Environmental Management Division is to support environmental compliance, lead the city of Oldsmar in a more sustainable direction, and to integrate sustainable and resilient concepts into the culture and structure of the city government. The goals and objectives are to train staff on new asset management software and provide technical support for public works divisions, track progress of meter upgrade project, ensure state and federal compliance with fuel, chemical storage sites, and industrial customers, assist in procuring grants for future capital projects, develop educational campaigns, coordinate with public communications for social media engagement, support the annual consumer conference report, rapidly respond to environmental concerns, and provide community outreach and education for sustainable programs. Help city departments with environmental compliance, sustainability, and promote sustainable values in the community. Assist public works with maintenance and infrastructure improvements for city services. Update and document standard operating procedures throughout the division. Continue to encourage division training and regulatory changes and technology to ensure highly skilled staffing and compliance. Some of the highlights, we have twenty-five thousand dollars budgeted for engineering services. This includes budget for our local limits assessment, we have to do every twenty, every five years. Wish it was every twenty-five years, but it's every five years. So, that's why there's an increase there. Lab analysis, nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. This includes money for our beach sampling that we've been doing, and five thousand for promotional activities. Alright, I'm gonna kick it back to Finance. There's someone over here.
Okay. So, you'll find the debt service and the water sewer fund on page 180 of your budget document. Debt service accounts for the principal and interest for debt related to the water and sewer system improvements. This debt is related to the construction of the RO plant. It was refinanced in 2021, and it retires in 2032. For fiscal year 2324, we have a budgeted debt service of four hundred seventy-four thousand six hundred and five dollars. The city has a reserve in the water and sewer fund to provide for future renewal and replacement of capital assets and infrastructure. For fiscal year 2324, five hundred thousand has been budgeted to this reserve account. We've also talked a lot tonight about the importance of having a contingency reserve. Starting in 2324, a new contingency reserve account will be established in the water and sewer fund, specifically for unanticipated expenses and cost escalations that may arise throughout the year. Just over a hundred and eighty-two thousand has been budgeted in this new account. Alright, moving on to our second enterprise fund, the Water and Sewer Impact Fund. This fund budgets for monies received from impact fees charged to developers and others in order to pay for the necessary expansion of the water and sewer systems. The revenue received by this fund is highly dependent on new development during the year, and any savings needed for assistance with projects related to system expansion would typically be transferred to the water and sewer fund. As you can see, there's no expense or transfers anticipated for fiscal year 2324. All the revenue we receive in this impact fund will be saved for future projects. The total proposed budget is ninety-four thousand. Our third enterprise fund is the Stormwater Fund. The Stormwater Service Program maintains our stormwater infrastructure. We skipped to page 188 of your budget book, and we can review quickly the revenue profile for the Stormwater Fund. Again, supported primarily by fees or charges for services at seventy-four percent. Impact fees are one percent, intergovernmental revenue is twelve percent, appropriated reserve eight percent, and miscellaneous revenue is five percent. This proposed budget includes a two dollar per ERU per month increase to the residential and commercial stormwater fees, which council will see on the September 5th agenda. The total revenue of two point one million is a sixty-three percent decrease from the prior year. And as you can see, the prior year included two point one million dollars in ARPA funds. On the expense summary, we see personnel services in nineteen percent, operating expenses at sixteen percent, capital at twenty-one percent, debt service at seven percent, and reserves at thirty-seven percent. On the table version, we can see an expected increase in personnel services and operating expense. This is due to the fifty percent allocation of the new public works administrator position. And I will hand it back over to Daniel.
Alright. We're coming into the airport here.
Taxiing on the jet.
Stormwater Utility Fund. The division provides excellent service to the city's stormwater management facilities and its customers, and ensures environmental stewardship of our natural water bodies. It also maintains all city-owned ditches, culverts, pipes, swales, ponds, and structures. Our goals and objectives are to design the State Street ditch while meeting grant requirements, update new permit regulations and our standard operating procedures to comply with the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, municipal separate storms sewer system permit. Known as the MS4. Use a global work order system for MS4 data scheduling and maintenance tracking. Maintain a bi-monthly street sweeping program to remove pollutants from our roadways and to prevent contamination of waterways. Continue to rapidly respond to resident requests regarding facility deficiencies, provide sandbag service for residents during possible flood events. We will continue to inspect, construct, repair, and maintain facilities under the city of Oldsmar's jurisdiction, inspect cities' outfalls in order to maintain proper biological levels and minimal contaminant levels, update and document standard operating procedures throughout the division, continue to encourage licensure, education, and cross-training between disciplines to ensure our highly skilled staff. Some budget highlights. There's a rate increase scheduled in fiscal year 24. It's two dollars per equivalent residential unit. Increases in sand and sandbag materials in order to replenish our supplies for hurricane preparedness. This last year, we wiped everything out. Douglas Road Drainage and Profile Improvement Projects, project will be rebudgeted and included in final budget. In the major capital projects, you'll see ones we've spoken on before, but a few that we haven't. We have the EOC Enclosed Cargo Trailer. So, we are requesting to buy a trailer that we will load up with our emergency supplies. So, we currently have these big, heavy boxes that weigh about as much as a piano.
How were we doing it before?
These, we have these boxes that are, basically, we load up these boxes with chainsaws and...
Coffee pots.
Everything you would need in a hurricane.
Yeah.
And they weigh about as much as a piano. And so, we, we have those and use a forklift and put them on the truck, and it's a whole thing. But our plan is to have a dedicated trailer for these supplies to be ready to use. So, the way it works is we have our chainsaws in there, and at the beginning of the year, we buy new chainsaws. Those chainsaws go, stay in the box and go into the, into the storm boxes. And then the ones that are in the storm boxes go into use, like regular day, everyday use. So, we're cycling them out. The idea is to have sharp chainsaw blades, everything's ready to go.
That's what I do with my water, every hurricane year, every placement.
Yeah. Or we could just drink our water.
I'm scared at the grocery store like everybody else buying hurricane supplies, Daniel.
Okay, the next one is excavator safety guard. This is a guard to go over our excavator so that, to protect the operator, so that things don't pop back and hit him in the face. Or break our machine, really. The hydraulic grapple claw, this is a device that goes on our, what's it called? I'm so bad at these things. Skid steer, thank you, sorry. Skid steer, and that will help us to pick up branches in the street and move them quickly, especially in a hurricane. Next is the landscape trailer. This is a, we have our mower and our weed eaters. We want to load up a trailer and have it ready to deploy to make our operation more efficient. Next, we'll go to Amy to talk about solid waste.
Yay!
It ends in the land, so.
Missed it. Alright, so this is our last enterprise fund and the final fund of the night. We did it! Alright, so here we are with the Solid Waste Division. I guess you know what this fund does. It provides for the solid waste and single-stream recycling, collection, and disposal for the city. As you can see, again, this being an enterprise fund, the primary source of revenue is charges for services or fees coming in at a hefty ninety percent. Miscellaneous revenue is one percent, appropriated reserve at eight percent, and intergovernmental revenue at one percent. As this table shows, revenues are only expected to increase about two point four percent next year. We do not have any rate increases in the budget, as we will use some rate stabilization reserves to cover the contract increases with the hauler. Total revenue, three point two million dollars. Solid waste expenses, there are no personnel costs in this fund. The majority of the expense is with the other contractual services at eighty-four percent, which is the solid waste hauler, coastal waste, and recycling. On this breakout, we can see an increase expected for insurance at fifty percent as well as an increase in the expense allocation. Again, three point two million dollars. And the service program for the Solid Waste Division provides collection, removal, and disposal of all residential, commercial, and municipal garbage and trash. It coordinates the single-stream recycling program for the city and all its residents. The highlights include that this is the third year of a five-year contract, and again, there are no rate changes planned for fiscal year 24.
Wonderful.
And with that, I will turn it back to City Manager Felicia Donneling.
Can you go back to slide number four, please?
Sure. I want to thank all the staff for their really hard work over the last several months to put this transparent program together for the council. I want to thank the council for the careful consideration of the budget. You know, this is, this is hard work. And so, I thank you guys for investing all the time that you have and studying all these issues and challenges. So, if you all don't have any questions, I have some final wrap-up things.
Any questions? I just wanted to mention one quick thing. Kristen's first budget meeting, congratulations, you made it through. Good job, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, thanks for the opportunity to present. And then, we have next steps. So, the next steps are, we're gonna revise the budget based on your changes, and we're gonna rebudget Douglas Road. Alright, so, we're gonna do that. And then, September 5th, we have two public hearings. We have one for the millage rate to establish four point oh five, and then, we have one to establish the 24 tentative budget. And then, there's also an item to raise the stormwater fees. So, all of those are budget-related, all at the September 5th meeting. And then, September 20th is the final public hearing, and that's to establish the budget for next year. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments?
Of course, sorry, we made it this far. I know it was the last topic, but for solid waste, if we're on the third year of a five-year contract, if that goes out to bid again, perhaps we should look at a rate increase? Just a thought, you know. The only reason I bring it up is because there's a trend, right? So, we have done, you guys, this is, this is an amazing document. Setting up a contingency in water sewer, brilliant. Whoever, like, thank you, brilliant. Everything from the name changes, the personnel shifts to plan for the future. The document's obviously graphically beautiful.
The document's obviously graphically beautiful as well, and always presented with such passion and pride. You know, the fact that we're all here, it's almost eleven o'clock, and you guys are all laughing with each other and just so proud. It's, it fills my, fills my cup, as my little guy would say. So, this trend, though, we, we're looking at all of our fees for services, we're looking at all of our rates, we've adjusted them, we are adjusting them to where we're statutorily allowed to, and debt's still expensive, and our fees from, you know, services and other governmental transfers aren't going up anymore, so, you know, like, communication services, tax fees, local option, like, all that's either flat or down. So, in the next couple of years, I'm expecting that we're going to have to make different changes, other than, I don't know, just hiring Chip's daughters and not paying them or something, because, like, in other words, I can see, I appreciate the conservativeness, and I appreciate all of the creativity, but at some point, we have to confront, we have to confront this, right? So, you know, and I think we're only, please God, no, but we're only like one disaster away from confronting it, right? So, I think this is fantastic. Thank you all for your time and dedication. I appreciated everybody's subjective comments about their department as well. It's just so much passion and pride. I love it. Thank you, guys.
Vice Mayor?
I'm sure you probably, if you looked at your calendar, knew how many meetings you all had together to plan for tonight, so I think, I'm sure the council would agree that as the exercise of what we did earlier has already ballooned from what it was last year, a separate work session for that probably is warranted, so that, and I'm sure everybody would appreciate that. If we had a six o'clock budget meeting again, it wouldn't maybe last till almost eleven. But other than that, great job. Thank you.
I'm just going to talk for another ten or twelve minutes. Thank you, everybody. That's all I have.
Look, sharpening pencils and getting down and figuring out where to save, where the efficiencies are, seventeen percent decrease from last year, as Councilmember Gannon said, that's all great, but at some point, that, can't keep doing that, and there are some hard choices that are coming in the future that we need to make. I don't want to say anything here, but it's going to get tougher and tougher every year that we do this, if current economic climate keeps going the way it is. So, I applaud city staff on the ability to do this. I applaud all of my fellow council members and mayor on the exercise we went through this evening, very challenging to go through that, and when you're pulling at heartstrings, it's hard to make tough decisions. So, thank you to everybody, thank you everybody on the council, and I got four minutes left.
I just want to say thank you to Garrett, you know, taking over for Cindy while she couldn't be here. You guys all did a great job. Chief, you hanging out with us tonight, I can't believe it, that's good for you. But, in the chamber, thank you for hanging out with us, and we appreciate that. I think the council all appreciates that you're here. And again, city staff and Felicia, thank you for all your hard work. I've got an early meeting, I'm tired. Anyone else tired?
Of course.
All right. Anything else for the record?
Jason, thank you for the five earlier. Again, appreciate that effort, appreciate that effort to get that money. Thank you.
All right. Good night, everybody.